... and hands-on activities related to the learning of birds that sparks students' curiosity and deepen their understanding of the natural world around them. Beyond her work with 4th grade, Alyssa also takes initiative in coordinating engaging science-focused field trips for other grade levels, ensuring that all students have the opportunity to experience real-world connections to their learning. Her passion for science is evident in everything she does, from designing inquiry-based lessons that encourage critical thinking to fostering a classroom culture where exploration and discovery are celebrated. Alyssa's career-long commitments to nurturing curiosity and a lifelong love of learning has inspired not only her students, but also other teachers within the school, who frequently turn to her for ideas and collaboration. Through her unwavering enthusiasm, creativity, and leadership, Alyssa continues to motivate those around her to explore, discover, and embrace the wonders of science every day.
Alyssa, do you want to come on?
All right. Let me take a picture.
Oh, yeah, now it's picture time.
Yes.
Where do we go?
No speech.
Where do you want us? Over here in the corner?
Oh.
Thank you.
You're in the middle here. You're front and center.
It's a mercy.
Come on, Eric. Get in here.
He's going to bring you in there. Equal torture, bro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, next is board goals. So, we had a little bit of discussion about this. Basically, in the past, we've just adopted the superintendent's goals as our goals. And I think that if we wanted to have our own goals, we could certainly discuss that right now. So, I would tell you, for me personally, the superintendent goals align with what I want to accomplish, which is instruction, the facility stuff, and then the communication plan. So, I don't know that I would add anything that we're not already discussing, but I guess I'd open it up to discussion from anybody. If anybody wants to add anything.
I agree. I think an alignment with the superintendent's goals is appropriate for where we're at.
Okay. You guys agree?
Yeah.
Okay, then I guess I would entertain a movement, a motion to approve the superintendent goals as board goals as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the superintendent goals as board goals as presented.
All right, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've been seconded. All in favor? Or any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, board working agreement. Now, I was not at our last training where we discussed this, but I watched it, and it was interesting, and I got a lot out of it. I don't have a problem personally with either of the working agreements, the one that we already have or the one that OSBA presented. They're both fine with me. If I had to pick one, and I do, if we have to pick one, I'd pick the shorter of the two, which is the existing one we already have. I don't know that OSBA brings anything to the table that isn't already covered or that is necessary. With the one exception of being, and I did want to discuss this, he talked about a round rob and a style of commenting where I call out everybody twice. To me, that didn't really seem necessary, but I don't know how you guys felt about that or if you remember him mentioning that.
Yeah, especially the new board members. Please weigh in on this because that's important, yeah.
I do recall the way he mentioned that, and there were some instances I could see the benefit in that, and there are some instances where I feel like it would just be a lot of silence.
Yeah.
If you had people who were particularly reluctant to speak, I think it might be useful, but I don't really see that as a problem here.
That was kind of my thought.
I agree with Bruce.
Okay, so, any other thoughts on the working agreements between the two picking one? No?
Well, yes, I prefer ours over OSBA's. I just didn't want to, you know, I want to make sure you guys get your opportunity to speak, please.
No, I can, I prefer the one that was already there, being on one page and having the points just really prominent for us to understand what we're working towards and what we're doing. It's clear. I like it.
I don't know if you guys know the history, but when Sean and I got on, there was like a four or five-page one, and we cut it down to this one just last year, so it seemed to work pretty well. Okay, then let's, then I would entertain a motion to approve the, our current board working agreement.
I'll move to approve the current agreement as presented.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Go ahead.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, board development plan. The OSB recommended, maybe I didn't study this one. Any thoughts on the GAPS board development plan?
I wonder about the necessity of this.
Okay.
In my opinion, we have a great working relationship with all the board members. We have clear communication with the administration, and we're kept apprised of all of the changes and stuff that come up with staff. I don't know that we need to add more to our plate, but I'm willing to go along with what you guys think, so that's just my opinion.
Well, it's kind of nice to look at this and see where we should be at any given point of the year. That's the advantage I can see in it, but I don't know that it's essential.
Right. That was the only thing I really, that really stood out for me on that was that annual self-assessment of saying, okay, you know, come mid-spring or towards closer to the end, just saying, where are we? Is this where we intended to be at this point? And do we need to change things going forward or?
Chris, was this a higher OSBA to run us through this, or was this just a keep in mind and handle this ourselves?
This was options of what the board could do. So, you could pull out that section and do just a work session on that and a self-evaluate on that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that doing a self-evaluation in the spring as a work session is a good idea. I think we should do that. I don't know that formally adopting anything to that, I don't know how necessary that is in particular.
Right.
I think we could just request it added to the calendar in spring when it works, and then we could all have a work session. I think that's, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everyone's okay with that. So, I think if that's the jewel taken out of this, I think we should just set it up.
That does seem like the most beneficial and also the most, you can change the most at that point, whereas if you need to address something, have more meetings, put more back on the plate, we can always do that at that meeting as opposed to adopt the whole thing when we do seem like we have good communication within ourselves and with the district leadership to be able to adjust that as necessary. I think doing a meeting in the, at one point to be able to check in and see where we're at as opposed to adopting all of these things preemptively would be my.
Okay. So, we don't need a motion, right? We just need to agree that we're going to do that to the calendar?
I think you just request that Chris set it up on the calendar, and I think that could be done. We could take a motion if we need to. Do we need to, just a request? Okay.
Okay. All right, excellent. Look at us flying through this. We'll be out of here before midnight.
Optimist.
Okay, superintendent report.
Okay, I think we have, is it coming up on the? There it is. So, just a few things. The first thing I want to do is just recap the listening session. We had two speakers, our union presidents. The first speaker was Liz Craig, our classified president, talked a little bit about some snags with food service, and I know Mr. Boland and Liz have met a couple of times just working on solving the problems with the supply chain at this point. Liz did give us an update on the mentor program with more new hires. They are training additional mentors, and there is interest from several staff to do that, and I think they're moving towards, they had four, they're looking for six or Classified staff, still a concern that some of our specialized classrooms or self-contained are still struggling there. She wanted to give a shout out to the CTP program. She, you know, this is for our 18- to 21-year-olds, and a lot of great stuff there, and we got some great cookies out of that, so thank you, Liz. Dana Lovejoy, our GAEA president, shared some of the same concerns about our self-contained classrooms and not enough staff, not enough training, how people are being onboarded, not necessarily to do the MANT training, but just training in how their team and their classroom is operating to address things. Dana also mentioned that several of the committees are under, are going now that were agreed upon in last year's contract, and she feels like there's some good starts to some of those committees. Thank you guys both for your comments tonight. We had our first meeting on October 7th of the Long Range Facility Committee. Board members Lunsford and Taylor were in there as well as approximately 25 members of the committee. We had five people that did not, they had conflicts and weren't able to make it. We have met now with four of those on makeups, and I think the fifth committee member will be in tomorrow afternoon. And so, we did learn a lot about bonds. In particular, one of the most important things I think that was emphasized is that tax rates are applied to your assessed value and not the market value, which is quite a bit less than the tax rate. Like, if people go on Zillow and calculate their tax rate, they're going to come up with a huge number when the actual assessed value is less than that. It was a good positive meeting. I thought that people interacted really well and asked a lot of really great questions. Carol Samuel is here from Piper Jaffray, who is the tracker of our complete district tax base and its change in value year to year, and was able to give us some projections there. The cell 5D and observations, you'll recall that this is a very important part of the first goal, which is learning systems. Been really pleased with the staff. The principals have been doing a lot of observations and had a lot of follow-ups with staff. I have particularly enjoyed being with Sue Luthra, our elementary director. She goes out with three different principals all at the same time, and I think the discussions are great. We are using AI to give feedback. Staff is pretty impressed with the level of feedback. I mean, to me, it seems like it's just almost too much to do, but I think staff are doing a pretty good job of helping people come back to what they can do over time. And so, in general, there's a lot of knowledge that is growing, and I invite the board to either join us, maybe one or two. I've been really impressed, too, with the staff, because we'll walk into a room and there might be five of us, and they don't seem to be put off by that at all. They're just teaching, and it's pretty cool. Really like, if we can build that, then of course, one of the things we'd love to do as well this year is to really build staff-to-staff learning and feedback with each other, right? Build communities of practice. We know we have some places where that's really growing right now, and that will take time, but just, I think we're off to a strong start there. Have a couple of public comment follow-ups from the last meeting. One of those was 15-minute lunches, and the students were taken out of the lunchroom as soon as 15 minutes were up, and they weren't able to finish their lunches. We find that generally the practice is that there are 15 minutes giving before new kids enter. Students can stay because they generally leave the lunchroom and go to recess, right? And so, we are, and Bruce can talk about that later at public comment tonight because we do have another one around the 15 minutes. But if we were to, say, give 30 minutes for lunches and make that discrete, one group of kids get 30 minutes for lunch, we would generally have a really early lunch and a really late lunch before we got all the kids in and they all had that time. The other thing that we would probably have is a whole lot of supervision. If kids were getting done in 15 minutes and we made them stay there 30. And so, typically, children can stay until they're done. Also typically, most kids are done, right? And so, Bruce will share that later. He went out in response to the comment that was received tonight and actually looked exactly at that lunch. We find that lines are fairly short. I think Genuine has done a great job at really pressing towards the three important things, that the food tastes good, that the people are friendly, and that the line is short and quick. That's like the key. And so, Dave, do you have anything to offer there?
No, I will only have a presentation.
Okay, sounds good. And then the last one was the West Albany comments that were made at the last meeting. You know, obviously, and I want to honor and, you know, just make sure that this is not in any way deterring the person who worked at West Albany from continuing to make a comment if she feels that it is necessary. There were some things, one of the things was we, that the working conditions were unsafe. OSHA did visit the site. I was able to meet with him, the inspector, a couple days later, and the recommendation that he said would be coming would be that there was a rolling bread cart that was parked in front of an electrical panel, and they want to make sure that those are available. So, we will get a comment there. The arrival of freight is not in itself a health hazard, and Mr. Boland did provide you guys with information that at the beginning of the year, there are big orders that sometimes come in. And so, that is certainly something that we will continue to monitor and will be happy to work with OSHA. He actually made a great suggestion or two about our health or our safety committee, and we want to make sure that people understand that that's a place where they can go rather than call OSHA, that they can work through the district safety committee. It is a different pizza. We want to be clear, we just ate the pizza. I did eat some pizza here in the last two or three years, and it is a different and better pizza, without question. And so, the training of the staff, we do have some ship-out, people with ship-out experience there, but I do want to say this, that it is understandable that staff was very short due to a couple of jobs that were open right at the very end, and so, was that a stressful situation for sure, and we acknowledge that. Now, we'll go on to our really fun stuff. So, one of the things that's occurred this year is that because of the big beautiful bill in July, Oregon has ended up with about $372 million in shortfall because of the fact that our income tax and the federal income tax are tied. We take their income tax codes, those changed in July, and so, this has left Oregon with about a $370 million shortfall. Governor Kotek has asked that all agencies are expected to reduce costs while protecting core services by sharpening our pencil, slowing spending, rethinking operations, delaying non-critical investments, suspend all non-essential out-of-state travel. The memo that was sent out from the Legislative Fiscal Office as a result of this, the September forecasts project the revenue shortfall. The LFO, the Legislative Financial Fiscal Office, requested budget reduction planning from all agencies. It's not an atypical request. There are times when this can be done. It is being shared, however, that there is a high likelihood that reductions will be needed. And so, what the governor is asking is for all state agencies, and we are our own agency, but we are funded in the general fund through formulas from ODE. And so, we are planning, although the cuts are not, they haven't told us that we're cutting, they are asking us to make a plan. And so, there are three potential reduction options that we are looking at. 5% in the general fund with a 2.5% incrementation, so a 2.5% cut and then a 5%, and then a 5% again on increments through other funds such as the CAT-funded program, which is the SIA. And then, the state school fund, likely 1% increments there. And so, if you take a look on, we've already passed the draft options due. November 3rd, final options are due into the Legislative Fiscal Office, and then later on, in February of 2026, the legislature will consider statewide rebalancing. Before we go further, right, so this would be, we are perceiving it, K-12 Education is still looking at that going, okay, there's rain possibly in the forecast, and we should have a raincoat with us, right? But we should probably watch. One of the things, 370 million in a $39 billion budget is a 1% shortfall, right? And so, if we were entirely proportional, we would cut about 1%. We are not sure of all of the forecasting tools that are available to the state government at this time, but at the same time, that is certainly a reason to not leave the house without our income. And so, we will be definitely keeping a watchful eye on that. We meet every Friday morning, superintendents do, to get the latest updates. Often, ODE is joining us, so we will just continue to update you as we see that, and we'll be watching. And finally, with goal number three, we have a community newsletter, and we have the first draft very close to finishing. I've got to add a couple things in there, but we will be, in general, looking to update the broader community. We have that, and you have some cards at your desk that you can use to help people. You can always email communications@albany.k12 in order to join the list, or if anybody that you know, we can build that with. And part of each newsletter that we send out will be included, and that will be a link to, for more people to join. So, that's where we're at, and I rest.
Okay. Next up is the business financial report.
Good evening. So, tonight I just want to give you an update of what has changed for us since July 1. And so, I want to start with enrollment changes. Normally, I speak to you in terms of the ADMR, the average daily membership, but this is student counts, October 10th of '24 compared to October 10th of '25. And you can see in '24-'25, the total was 8,756, and then this year, October 10th, 8,395. So, that's a reduction of 361. And so, not all of that is a surprise to us. We talked about that through our budget process. We reduced the budget by not quite all of that. We were short about 70. So, in September, ODE came to all business managers, and they were doing what they called an out-of-cycle rebalancing. And they asked us all to go in and update our ADM, because they see around the state that it's going down. And so, for us, that rebalancing resulted in 770,000 being reduced from our basic school support. And then, ODE reduced SIA by about 200,000, and the high school success by about 100,000. And we moved FTE out of those two grants into the general fund, so the general fund absorbed the total cut of the 1,070,000. And that sounds bad, which it is, but going into our budgeting, Andy and I spent a lot of time talking, we knew that we may have additional cuts because of the trend for enrollment. And as we were balancing '24-'25, we worked really hard balancing all of our grants, and towards the end of the year, you know, we worked hard with our schools to get the ending fund balance as high as possible. So, we are able to absorb this cut with our beginning fund balance. We won't have to make program cuts, FTE cuts, so we have just absorbed the 1,070,000. So, the approach we took as we finished the year, working with all of our grants and having that ending fund balance was huge that we could do this. Now, the future cuts Andy talked about, it might be a different story, but there are districts that I've listened to the business managers, we've been meeting almost weekly, and some of them are calculating the cost of days, are looking at rebalancing their budgets. And so, I'm super thankful for the support of the budget committee and our board to allow us to work the way we did and have that beginning fund balance. And our goal will, to make sure we end the year at the board policy level of 8%. And so far, we're on track to be a little bit above that. So, as Andy told you, we have those cuts coming, and a 1% is between 700,000, 800,000 to our district. And so, we will be watching to see, you know, what the governor does, what the legislature does, and ODE is working with us and keeping us informed. The good news is, in that rebalancing of down, the 770,000 down, we are at our '24-'25 ADM level. And remember, we're paid the highest of two years, '24-'25 or '25-'26. So, I don't foresee any additional cuts for ADMR, even if we continue to go down. So, that is, that is some comfort in this. And then, lastly, next steps. In December, I will bring to you financials that will show our projected ending fund balance for '25-'26, just based on everything that we know at that time. But I also want to bring to you, as I look ahead for '26-'27, I see lots of challenges, you know, if the enrollment continues to reduce, and also, as we do reduce our beginning fund balance, that decreases the percentage that we have for the next year. So, say we get a 4% increase next year, but we reduced our ending fund balance by 2%. And so, that definitely has an impact. And then, of course, any reductions we have from the governor, and then also, we are going into bargaining with our classified. So, lots to watch for, lots to plan for, and I will be bringing you what I know in December. Questions?
Yeah, I do. So, Jane, they're not going to decide to consider rebalancing until the end of February. What's that going to do for our, I mean, our year's going to be almost over?
We will be apprised. So, in November, we will know what ODE is recommending to the legislature. We have a business manager meeting, I think, towards the end of November, that they're going to tell us what's being proposed. So, we won't be totally blind. We won't know the action that's taken, but at least we can calculate how much it will cost, and we will know maybe, you know, what our, what the worst-case scenario is.
So, Brad, just a couple things. Number one, we will get a December quarterly revenue forecast. It'll occur right at the end of Thanksgiving break, and we always have a meeting in Eugene to go over that. So, we'll know whether we're tracking against the 370.
The state budget itself, yeah, okay.
And the other thing is, we have meetings continually about what that plan is. The other thing I want to remind people, I think that we're 1% low right now, and I think we have 12 to 15 billion dollars in rainy day fund reserves at the state. So, the question would be, would they choose to use that to offset anything right now? They tend to be very conservative and think, well, we want to save that for the big one, right? And so, it's, who knows? And so, but that is another, one of the reasons why people are more patently like watching as opposed to going right to it.
If I may ask, will this affect the financial aid and financial status of Title I schools in their area for the year?
So we'll know whether we're tracking against the 370.
The state budget itself, yeah, okay.
And, uh, the other thing is we have meetings continually about what that plan is. The other thing I want to remind people, I think that we're 1% low right now. I think we have 12 to 15 billion dollars in rainy day fund reserves at the state. So the question would be, would they choose to use that to offset anything right now? They tend to be very conservative and think, well, we, we want to save that for the big one, right? And so it's, who knows? And so, but, uh, that is another, one of the reasons why people are more patently like watching as opposed to going right to it.
If I may ask, uh, will this affect the financial aid and financial status of Title I schools in their area for the year and further on?
We haven't received word that title will be cut for the 25, 26 year. It definitely could going in the future.
That's a federal fund, not a state fund. Still much work to do and it goes without saying that next year, the floor would be the lower number. This year we're on this number, the higher number, last year's number. But you always get the higher of two years.
Right.
And next year would be at the lower floor.
So I think it's safe to state that we're in a decline and we need to be prepared for such and be looking forward to that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, and that's not going to be pleasant. I mean, we can see the other districts around us that are suffering with that. Uh, thanks to our leadership, we have not had as drastic a time. And thank you Jane for all the work you and your staff have done to really keep us apprised and keep us on top of this. It's been fantastic, but there's some financial realities we're not going to be able to get around. That the, the greatest amount of planning can't solve. So we're just got to, thank you so much for being diligent and, and keeping us apprised and, um, we'll make the softest landing possible.
That's right.
Okay. Now we'll move on to, uh, board member reports. Stephanie, you got anything?
I do not.
Okay. Sean?
Do not this one.
Brad? Oh, do I.
Okay.
Okay. Finally, my, my wishes have been answered and they brought us pizza and it was excellent. But what they didn't tell me is they make these little tiny calzones that are totally awesome. So, uh, with a marinara sauce, it was, I had both. It was really great. So, uh, well done on the pizzas. Thank you for finally, uh, allowing me to have some. I really appreciate that. Uh, second thing on my list is our adjacent school district, Lebanon, is in the final running for a $1 million stadium, uh, remodel. And we are, you're able to go on, it's a T-Mobile Friday night 5G Lite page. Uh, you can vote every day with your email. Speak to the M and M cookies because I was fixated upon the chocolate chip and I've had two and they're great. So, and they brought us these wonderful thank you cards. So thank you again for that. Uh, if you get a chance to have one of those cookies, don't hesitate. They're good. Okay, that's mine.
Okay, thanks. I will speak to the M and M cookies. They also were delicious.
Excellent.
So yeah, good, good. And you're right about the pizza. It was great, but the calzones even better. A little brush garlic or something on the outside.
Yeah, a little butter and garlic. It was really good.
Yeah, it's good. But otherwise I don't have any reports either. Uh, so, and we don't have our West Albany student reports, so we'll just have to guess what's happening at West Albany because they didn't submit a report either, but we'd love to hear from South.
Sure thing. Uh, good evening, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Uh, I'd like to start with, uh, the athletes who have made college commitments because I think that's very exciting. So, uh, the first one, Brennan Mesa, uh, going to Idaho State University for football. Taylor Donaldson, University of Wyoming for basketball. Kaylee Cordell, Lewis and Clark State College for basketball. And Emily Teshida at Eastern Oregon University for softball. So along the topics of sports, for football, we have a rivalry, rivalry game against West this Friday. And for volleyball, we are ranked first in state and we're wrapping up next week. Uh, the league playoffs are on the 28th of this month and home playoffs are on November 1st. And not to mention the great student section, we won an award last year for, um, for our student section, the sportsmanship award. And, uh, we're trying to go for a second one this year. Uh, and for girls soccer, their final game versus Lebanon. Uh, boy soccer, uh, tomorrow, there's a game versus Dallas at home at seven o'clock. Water polo league tournament on November 1st. Boys and girls across country, there's a lot of personal records, really good meets. And, uh, there's districts at Silverton soon. Um, and I'd like to recognize two of our students who, uh, who placed first at the Lebanon Open. Chase Fulton, a junior, and Addie Wisner, a sophomore. And now for, uh, our extracurriculars, uh, there is a choir fall concert at 7:00 PM at the APAC on Wednesday, this Wednesday. Cheer Allstate was hosted last weekend at South. The Outsiders, the play will be, uh, held at LBCC. It opens on the 14th of November and closes on the 22nd of November. And, uh, for the extra, uh, bits that we're doing, uh, we are holding a food drive from November 3rd to the 14th. We believe, uh, I haven't gotten all the details yet, but I believe we are donating the food all to Fish. And we recently, last week, held a club rush, which is a, uh, an all club festival where students would get to mingle and, uh, meet, um, all the different clubs, uh, and their presidents and all that they are. And it was a really great turnout. The busiest it's ever been, the biggest amount of clubs we've had, I believe. It was a great time. This week, we are holding a spike ball tournament. If you don't know what spike ball is, um, it rocks. It's a circular net in the middle. There are two teams, uh, two players and they hit a ball against the net and, um, if you don't get it, then you lose.
When is this tournament?
This tournament, uh, yes, uh, it's this week at South during lunch. Uh, I'm not exactly sure of all the dates.
This week is a long, lot of days. Which day?
Indoor or outdoor?
Go every day.
Is it indoor or outdoor?
I think it's indoor. Yeah.
Mr. Boland and I are going to take everybody on.
Somebody take that.
We're going to need that on film.
Jane Workman's comp coming.
And I mean, there might be another one coming up, so I'll let you know.
Please do.
On 28th, we have, uh, our testing day, the district testing day, where the sophomores and freshmen, uh, get to take the pre ACT. Uh, the juniors and seniors, uh, can take the ACT. And any student, uh, can take the ASVAB, a military, um, military s- test, which determines what, uh, kind of office, uh, you hold or position you hold in the military. And now to jump to the subject of new cafeteria food from Genuine. Uh, there are constant developments on the food and constant positive feedback. And in all time, food service high. Uh, there is a great mass of students moving towards the lines and frankly, it feels like, um, the streets of New York because it is bustling. So we are a quarter way through and, uh, the policies are having a positive impact. Uh, there are less disciplined referrals and vandalism. There's higher attendance. Uh, the classes are running smoothly and a highlight, uh, the freshman class. A few weeks ago, we held our spirit week on the week of homecoming. And the freshman class were beating all the other classes, uh, in the spirit, uh, activities as in dress up days. Like they were, um, every day, they beat the seniors too. Although they couldn't be as at the assembly because we're better, but, um, go seniors. Uh, but no, they're, they're doing great. It's a great, uh, freshman class. And I'm really excited to see what they do, uh, further this year. But there's a lot of involvement, probably the most I have seen in a hot minute. And, uh, that's with more encouragement to be involved. Uh, this has led to more seniors showing up, uh, to assemblies, uh, kind of an antidote for, uh, senioritis. And, uh, leadership is leading the charge and bringing kids with them with lots of successes. There's great morale. Uh, community culture is thriving. The club rush, great turnout. Uh, the student section at the South versus West volleyball game was massive. Half the stance were taken up by students. It was awesome. And my favorite, uh, RNN, the Red Hawk News Network is back. A weekly s- school news broadcast, which is a highlight of our homeroom period. And, uh, throughout the year, uh, as it develops, I'm really excited to see, uh, what's put on. And that's all I have.
Okay. A quick question. How, how is the cell phone policy being accepted in going through at South?
Uh, yeah, so it's going pretty well, uh, so far. I mean, during, uh, during class, uh, there's, uh, I haven't witnessed any, uh, so, uh, cell phone confiscations. A lot of students are handling it really well. I think it's, uh, yeah, the attention span, uh, you know, it's kind of broken, but it's better. And, uh, I've, I have had a lot more social interactions with people I wouldn't have thought I would have had. It has, uh, turned out to be, uh, quite a positive, um, turnout.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next is, uh, committee of school reports. First up, Sunrise Elementary.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to introduce, uh, Bob Richards to present, um, Sunrise Elementary School. Thanks, Bob.
Good evening, Chairman Mattingly, Superintendent Gardner, members of the board. It is my honor to present the good news about Sunrise Elementary, where tomorrow's light shines today. That's our motto that we just came up with this last year. And given the little bright specks of light in our school, it makes sense. They're, they're shining already here at Sunrise, so come see us sometime. A year ago, I reported to the board that our mission and vision was a work in progress. I'm proud to announce that we have a set of guiding principles. We looked at the work of Simon Sinek and thinking about our why. And our staff came upon these set of principles that we have achieved consensus on. And I know we can all read, but this is important, so allow me to read it to you. We at Sunrise believe in kindness. Students who feel safe and loved will have a positive experience in school. We believe in growth. All students can grow and achieve when provided an accessible education. We believe in teamwork. Collaboration between teachers, parents and students is key to success as we harness each other's strengths and perspectives for growth. We believe in belonging. Students of all cultures and backgrounds deserve caring adults who believe in them. And then of course, we believe in our students. We stand committed to developing the social and academic potential of tomorrow's leaders. This is why Sunrise exists. This is why our staff comes to work each day. We have goals for the year. I'd like to start by saying, thank you for our math curriculum. Our number one goal is math. And by the end of the year, we'd like to see 50% of our students be at grade level as measured by the end of year iReady screener. This would be an increase of 13% from the end of last year. And as you look at the data there on the side, you can see that we have, if you go to that very bottom row, over the years, we are seeing annual overall growth in math and the percentage of students who are at grade level. But it's nowhere close to where we want it to be. So we're pushing for 50%. It'd be an increase of 13%. Uh, you'll also see, if you look at those numbers there, we generally get stronger performance in the primary grades. And then, uh, it takes a dip in fourth and fifth grade. We also have inconsistent cohort growth. So if you look at the color codes there, say for example, kindergarten, two years ago, by the end of kindergarten, 54% of those students were at grade level. Then those same kids, roughly, we could, we do get a lot of move ins and move outs. But by the end of first grade, those same, that same cohort was only at 34% at grade level. Then the following year, the second grade team really saw those numbers, no, we got to reverse that trend. And they got that same group of kids up to 46% at grade level. So as I mentioned there, we've got some inconsistent cohort growth and you can see it at different levels. So what are we doing about it? Well, we have implemented Ready Math. It's a fantastic curriculum. Uh, the teachers will say, wow, it's hard. And thank you for it because now we see this is what our kids weren't getting in the past. This is the real stretch year. We're implementing it with fidelity and it's like pulling teeth and we're trying to plug all the holes as we get them to grade level. But it is a very rigorous curriculum. It involves a lot more discourse in the math lessons where students are turning and talking to each other. They're thinking about their thinking and not procedural, not invert and multiply those kinds of things. It's more conceptual understanding of math and it really grows kids' brains, which is important. We also at Sunrise provided teacher training on a small group approach. I hyperlink it here if you want to look at it sometime called fruit salad. And it's a catchy name for just how do you organize? Every day in math, we've got a whole group lesson, but then there's small group times as well. And the teachers, all right, pulling all the strawberries at this time and all the apples at a different time. And just thinking strategically about how to plug the holes and help get kids up to standard. Uh, the last thing I'd like to point out applies to all curricular areas. We're incentivizing regular attendance. Because the teachers can teach your tails off, but if the kids aren't in the seats, they're not getting it. And what we found at Sunrise was 53% of our students last year were considered regular attenders. ODE will tell you 51%, but that's because they cut it off on May 1st. And we did an end of year push, hey, the school year's not done yet. Show up to school, show up to school. And we got it up to 53%, uh, but that's still nowhere close to where we want it to be. So we're doing a lot of attendance incentives this year. You'll see that bulletin board in the picture there where every day, we write on the bulletin board what the percentage of attendance is for today, uh, who the best class is, which class had the, uh, the best attendance and what the best grade is. And the kids walk by it on the way to lunch and they're like, oh man, so and so needs to get to school. They're the reason we're not, uh, we're not up there. And there's some positive peer pressure around getting to school. Our reading goal is our second goal. We'd like to see 63% of our kids to be on grade level as measured by iReady. That'll be an increase of 18%. The trends are, we've generally had stronger performance in reading than in math at Sunrise. And you can see that reflected in the numbers. We've generally had stronger scores in kindergarten, second grade and third grade. But then declining performance in fourth and fifth. I'm sure you've been around education a while and you know the phrase of in those younger grades, kids are learning to read and later on they're reading to learn. That really, that happens in third grade where that transition hits and then fourth and fifth, there it is. The fourth and fifth grade teachers are hoping that the kids have learned to read already and now can access their learning through their reading skills that are already there. Unfortunately, we're finding that's not the case. So we're working on plugging a whole bunch of holes in the kids' reading abilities. Uh, I leveled with the staff at Sunrise and you know how the budget situation was at the end of last year. We had some reductions. We had some staffing changes. And I just said, look, things are going to look different next year. We're going to see this as an opportunity. And every grade level at Sunrise looks different this year. We shifted some things around. No grade level is the same as it was last year. There are a few spots where there's a consistent person who is at that grade level, but they're welcoming in a new teammate and the people who have changed grade levels are going, oh boy, I didn't teach this grade last year. I need to dig in and learn what do kids need to know at this grade level. And we've got positive reviews from staff. Oh, I'm loving my new team. All right, I'm ready to teach third grade or I'm ready to teach fifth grade. There have been positive reviews from staff and they're really digging in. We also joined something called the Literacy Leadership Summit. It's, uh, put on by West Ed. That's a consultancy company. It's promoted by the ESD and they contacted us at the end of last year and said, hey, we see you're struggling here. We want to help. We have space for one more school in the area. And I said, okay, sign us up. I think we're the only school in GAPS who's part of that literacy leadership summit. We sent a team of people on August 22nd to a full day training. They're sending a consultant to us. She was just with us last week, going into classrooms, looking for, okay, what's working? What might be slightly broken? What do we need to fix? We also have monthly teacher team walkthroughs. And this is something we've done for a couple of years at Sunrise where teachers just open their doors. Hey, I want to be on the next set of walkthroughs. I want to go see what so and so down the hall is doing differently than mine. Because we're very transparent with our data. Here's everyone's data, names attached, teacher wise, and it's not a gotcha. It's just like, okay, you're struggling in that. Look in so and so down the hall. You can get some ideas from them. And then of course, just like with math, we're incentivizing regular attendance because they could be teaching like crazy and if the kid isn't there, they're not going to get it. Our area of greatest pride has been our behavior strategies at Sunrise. It's really foundational to all that we do. And when I came on as the principal at Sunrise two years ago, it was our greatest need. There were a lot of behavior incidents that were getting in the way of learning. And we've set some goals. We've purchased a supplemental curriculum called Character Strong. We've been implementing it for a couple of years now. And I'm proud to report, we have seen a great improvement in our behavior of our students. We also have little trackers. You've got a little picture of one there for students who are at the highest level of need. You've got a little picture of one there for students who are at the highest level of need, the tier-three needs. They need a lot of structure. They need things like this. These are token boards where, yep, you just concentrated for five minutes. Here's a token. Okay, you did another five minutes. Here's a token. And they're working towards whatever reward they've chosen during the day. But our goal last year was to get the percentage of tier-three support students who need that down to 9%. We actually got it down to 6%, which was a great success. Now we're in that zone where any 1% reduction, it requires a lot of effort, because we're so close to how the pyramid should look in an RTI pyramid. So our goal for this year is to get it down to 5% of students who need tier-three supports. We're seeing positive behavior at all tiers, but I will point out, we do still have a high degree of need. With only 332 students in our school last year, we still saw 788 office referrals. So that small percentage of kids is, they're my frequent flyers, and we're supporting them every way we can. As I mentioned, we implemented Character Strong. We're also doing social-emotional learning at the start of every school day. If you're there at the start of the day and walk into a classroom, nine times out of 10, you'll see the class sitting in a circle on the carpet, talking about, how are we going to do today? And how are we going to operate as a team? It sets a totally different tone for our kids. What does early literacy look like at Sunrise? Well, some schools' kids get pulled out into reading groups, mostly not at Sunrise. We implement a push-in model, so we have support staff who are paid for by Title I funds, and they go in during two different times of the day, the small-group support time and intervention support time, to help kids with reading. We also leverage our folks' expertise. Some people are trained more in the primary reading strategies. Others, I was watching a teacher teach vocabulary to a set of fifth graders today. So wherever the person's expertise is, that's where they should be with the students who have the highest need. As I mentioned, we've got the consultant from the Literacy Leadership Summit, and then we have the open doors with walkthroughs. Cell 5D is going very well at Sunrise. I love the fact that Cell 5D has 30 indicators, and so do our teachers, because that speaks to the complexity of teaching, doesn't it? It's not just, here's the five things you're going to get rated on. No, there's 30. Count them. And teachers are bought in on it at Sunrise. We've got a strong cycle of pre-observation, goal-setting, and discussion with me, the formal observation, and then a week later, the post-observation reflection meetings. Okay, how did that go? Which kids got it? Which kids didn't? What do you might want to change for next time? I've gotten through that with almost all of my staff members now, and it's a successful cycle. The thing I've committed to them is, in my goal, my principal goal, is to give frequent, meaningful feedback to every teacher throughout the year. And I said, hold me accountable to that. If you feel like you're not getting enough feedback from me, it's okay. My door's open, come and tell me. And so far, the comments I'm getting are, this is the best feedback I've ever gotten. Thank you for following the cycle. My only other thing I have to keep in mind is to stay on schedule, because it's 126 observation cycles over the course of the year. I can't get behind. I'll close with our points of pride and promise. The English Language Development Program at Sunrise is our brightest spot. About a third of our students learned another language before they've learned English, and they then qualify, most of them, for our ELD program. And last year, nine of those kids graduated from that program, which is a big number for our percentage of kids. They take the English Language Proficiency Assessment, the ELPA. And as indicated there, nine kids graduated based on their scores on the ELPA. And they're, we have a little ceremony for them. It's a lot of fun, and they're so proud. We also have strong family engagement and a newly-formed PTO, Parent-Tutor Organization. So our PTO is putting on a family movie night this Thursday. They're going to show Coco, I think, as they're calling it Spooky Movie Night. It's going to be pretty exciting. And we have clubs, because that's another thing in our research, as we studied, what else can we do to incentivize attendance? Well, if we've got a garden club for the littles and a garden club for the big kids, and fifth-grade leadership, and the Oregon Battle of the Books, the OBOP, kids will want to come to school, because they're not going to miss their club. They got to show up for that, right? So we've got clubs to encourage kids to come to school, and they enjoy them. And then a list of community partners. The middle picture there on that screen is the manager of Grocery Outlet, who brought us, hey, I've got some extra snacks. Do kids need snacks at your school? We sure do. Brought us a whole bunch of boxes of snacks, and our counselor there greeted him and brought those in. The bottom picture is our FACT team, who meets the needs of families. We do a wellness night every fall, and it always has great turnout from our families. So those are the good parts of Sunrise and the things we're working on. What questions do you have?
All right. Stephanie, you got any questions?
I don't. I had one, but he answered it as you were speaking.
Oh, good, I hope so.
Is 51% attendance less than before or more than before?
Yes, the previous year, we were at 67, according to our calculations. I think ODE said 63, again, because they did the May 1st cutoff. But it was a double-digit percentage drop, and we attributed that to. I heard from local-area pediatricians, it was the worst flu season in 15 years. We also had an interruption to our school calendar last year with a lot of stuff going on, but it was disturbing. We want to reverse that trend for sure.
The only thing, it was kind of just a general trend. You've mentioned the K through three and then the four and five. Is that something that has been pretty standard? I've kind of noticed that over the years, but I don't have data for sure. I was just, is that a general trend, or is that something more specific to more recently, last couple of years?
It's a general trend. This is my 21st year as an administrator, and I've seen it over the years. I'd say this is more severe, though. So I've laid it out there with staff and said, look, folks, we can't keep doing the same thing and expect different results. We're going to have to change some things. And they're bought in on it, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
So you said something, Bob, about the math curriculum is really helping. You think it was a good purchase and the results?
Very much so, a good purchase. It is stretching. What we had before wasn't meeting kids' needs. It wasn't teaching to the state and national standards. This one does, and it requires sometimes a teacher to get out of the way and let kids have that cognitive dissonance of, oh, I don't get this. I know, isn't it good to dig in and really feel the struggle? You're going to get it, you know? We got the power of yet that we talk about, so they're going to get it.
Okay, and on reading, I see that we have some challenges along the way. And one of the things I've talked about trying to get established is having volunteers come into the schools to help kids read. Is that something you would find of value?
Yes, yes. We had SmartReaders last year. It's an organization that sends readers into our school. We've had AmeriCorps volunteers. This year, for one reason or another, we're not seeing as many volunteers. We have a few, but we do have a parent-teacher organization that wants to get going with reading with kids as well.
We're sending that out in the first newsletter.
Excellent. Okay, so that's something that is rolling out here, because it's been my soapbox I've been on in trying to get more help in the classroom, help the teachers out, get some specialized reading time for the kids who need it, and so we can help try to get as many brought up as we can.
Yep.
Bob, can you tell us about the crunch?
About the what?
The crunch.
The crunch, oh, yes. This Thursday is Crunch at Once, Oregon Crunch at Once. It's a thing. It's part of the farm-to-school, farm-to-school network of food growers in our area. So we're going to have 300 and some odd, I think it was 384, Liberty apples from La Mancha Orchard in Sweet Home, delivered to Sunrise. And every kid and staff member will get an apple from a local, you know, orchard. And then we'll all crunch at once on the morning announcements. I'll say, all right, everybody, let's stay healthy, eat your apples, an apple a day. All right, ready, crunch. And it's a fun partnership, so.
What day is that?
Thursday.
That must be before the Smash Bowl tournament at South. So I'll stop on my way over for an apple.
Eat your apple.
Perfect.
Yeah, let's make sure we get some pictures of that. That sounds like fun.
First, I want to say, great presentation. Thank you. You're the first one, and you set the bar high. I did that last year, too, so. I feel like I got a really good sense as to what your challenges are and what you're doing about meeting them, so thank you. I get my question, I don't know if you know it's a question, but I always think about, you know, we talk about improving instruction and getting principals into teachers' classrooms. Sunrise is a school I always think of, because you're, from an Albany perspective, somewhat larger school, and our largest, our lowest SES school, which oftentimes comes with a lot of extra staff and Title I money, which means a lot of supervision for the principal. And I've always felt like, if you look at the continuum of principals, just the pure amount of supervision that Sunrise has, and there's a couple of schools right behind you that are in a rough spot, too. So I guess my question is, with the new expectation about being in classrooms, how are you, and the behavioral concerns, which you've got to get a handle on, but which still continue to be pretty significant at Sunrise, how are you feeling about your ability to get into the classrooms on the schedule that the district wants you on?
Thank, it's, I appreciate the question. I do have to be deliberate about it. Before the school year even starts, one of my August to-do tasks is to block out my in-class days, because I know those will get chipped away at as the year goes along. But I block them out on my calendar and then let the year begin and let things start to happen. It is a larger school for Albany. It's the smallest school I've been a principal of, so. But then, when you get to a certain size, you get things like an assistant principal and things like that, which we don't have the luxury of having here. So I do have to be deliberate about it. Fortunately, I am finding that I'm able to get into classrooms quite a bit.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Great presentation.
Awesome job, Bob. Thank you.
Next is Central Tequina.
I'd like to introduce Shannon Richards to present around Central and Tequina Elementary Schools.
Good evening. Well, I get to follow Bob, quite aware of his, what's going on there, seeing how I'm married to him. Anyway, I'm also excited to get to tell you about what's going on at Central and Tequina, having the, both the privilege and the challenge of being the principal of two schools at once. We will call it CINTAC from here forward, as you've heard me say several times. We'll get right into what our goals are as well, and we're going to start with our reading goal. Goal number one for us is to increase our on-grade performance in reading, and this is a composite between Central and Tequina. So while, yes, we have our two campuses, this score represents our K5 population. So we ended at 66% in June at on-grade level, and we are aiming for 75 this coming June. These are the action steps that we are looking for to get there. One of that is our daily small-group reading, and I've talked about that the last couple of years, how important that is, as well as that targeted intervention, and being really specific about what we're doing in each of those times of day. We've got that hour, these agreements, curricular agreements that we use. So an hour of core reading instruction, 30 minutes of intervention, and 30 minutes of small group. So we're getting a lot of reading time in a day, but then we have to use that time well. One of the things we started last year, and we're tweaking it a bit, because you try something and then you refine it as you go. We have teachers tracking each student's monthly reading progress at grade level in the classroom. So how is that going? We are getting more into student goal-setting. It is part of the CEL rubric in that assessment for learning piece, and many of our teachers have really taken that on as a personal goal, to get students involved in understanding their own learning and setting their own goals, and then giving them targeted feedback towards those goals that they're working on. Our instructional coach, Carrie Snead, for one, who is fantastic, so lucky to have her. But she's taken that on as a personal goal as well. We find that kids are in reading intervention, and sometimes they're frustrated, and I don't want to be in this group, and they act out. But getting them to understand, honey, why you're here. This, these are the things you specifically need, and here's how you're going to get past this and get where you need to go. And getting kids in on that, sometimes we've kept that a secret in the past, like maybe we don't want them to know. Maybe they'd feel bad if they realized, oh, I'm lacking a few skills, when actually, the opposite is true. Getting kids involved in knowing what am I working on and where am I going and why really helps. John Hattie's done a lot of research on that with his meta-analyses, and that has a really high effect. We have monthly PLCs. We're, we've moved, we had a lot of unit planning going on before, and we are getting back to kind of the root of what professional learning communities should be, which is based on data, where grade levels can get together and compare some common data. So we both teach third grade. We're giving this same assessment. Once a month, we're going to look at this data together and talk about, all right, what'd you do? What'd I do? How are your kids? How are my kids? What are the common pitfalls? Oh, my goodness, you did better than I did in that one. What can I learn from that? And I'm proud to say, our teachers have taken it right on. Last Wednesday, the two Wednesdays ago, was, we had formed a new recording sheet for our teachers, and we're trying to keep it simple, too complex, and people won't use it. But simple enough to say, talk about what data are you going to use? And at least once a month in reading, compare that with your grade level, and all of our teachers did. That is really fantastic. It speaks to their level of professionalism. And then our point of equity is, we don't have ELD services at Central and Tequina. And so really, what we're looking at is our students with IEPs and 504s. And making sure they do not miss core instruction is vital. Yes, they have particular needs, and they are pulled out for specially-designed instruction. But we have to be very careful to make sure you are still having access to core instruction and you're not missing that. I want to show some data related to this and why we arrived at the goal we are setting in reading this year. So this is the last three years of our composite CINTAC on-grade reading as per iReady. So in '22, '23, you can see our composite was just 25%. And then in '23, '24, we made it to 61. And then last year, '24, '25, we were at 66. So we're on the right road and aiming for 75 this year. I do want to draw the parallel, because there is a difference when you're going to look at state test scores. Those are going to be slower to respond. The state test, which many states use, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, is rigorous. I remember when it came out, and in Washington at the time, we were using a different test. And just even looking at that third-grade reading test was tough. It was, it was not an easy thing to do. But I want to draw that line to show that while in iReady, oh, I'm going the wrong direction. Come on, I need to go backwards. Okay, in iReady, you can see that we've made it up to the 66 for last year. Overall, our '24, '25 SBA scores in reading were 41. That is a higher bar. It is a trickier thing to get to. iReady is helping us move that along, and we can see how far behind, how many grade levels behind students may be. But even still, I want to show that there is a parallel here, that we are still moving forward. So we had gone from 37% at grade level, from our, and that's just grades three, four, five, obviously, K2 doesn't take that assessment, to 41. And then I want to point out the big jump in third grade this last year as well. That 33% to 47, that's significant. And that is yay on our third-grade teachers, but our Tequina staff, who do not take a Smarter Balanced Assessment, know very well they are a part of this. We don't get to that without K1 and 2 doing their job to make sure that students leave those grades ready to go, to hand off to that next group. I want to notice, too, though, not just year-over-year, but this is cohort data. When you look at our third graders from '23, '24, at 33%, and then you can see that cohort. So it's not just that they went to 47, but that's a different group of kids. That 33 to 38 on the Smarter Balanced is by and large a cohort group, where they are the same. Our second goal is a math goal. This one has been trickier, obviously not quite as high. And we want to increase our on-grade performance in math from 50% to 57 in iReady. We landed at 50 this last year. We're hoping to hit 57 this year. And some of the ways that we're going to get at that is through math professional development. Yes, we have district-level, but also, we are going to be offering in-building professional development. It's optional. It's after-school. Our coach is putting it on. And when we did that last year with writing, everybody came. They want it. They're showing up. We offer that as well to our classified staff, who, many of whom also attend to get that as well. We have a couple of things we're focusing on. I've used the Ready Math. In my previous district, we had adopted it, so I'm already quite familiar with it. But some of the big things include student discourse, as Bob referenced. Students have to talk about math. The person who does the most talking does the most learning, and we've got to get kids talking more. The three reads protocol that is in Ready Math is really important. So looking at a story problem, can't just read that one time. We've got to read it three times. And the first time, what's going on here? Really get your head around what's happening. Not thinking about the numbers. The second time, okay, what are the numbers and what do they mean? And then, what do we do about it? Now, what is it really asking us to do? But helping kids to not just solve, but to think. That conceptual understanding is important. We need manipulatives in kids' hands. I'm seeing that a lot more this year. And making mathematical models, being able to demonstrate my thinking. We want to create learners and encourage students to have confidence and be willing to be wrong, be willing to take a risk. Nothing is learned without a risk. And we want our kids to build that confidence, be able to talk about math, and develop that confidence. These are our scores in math over the last three years. Can see, we're also making steady growth in iReady over these three years, from 11 to 49 to 50. 49 to 50, just 1% last year, but we are on the road. I want to show you how that is happening then when we look at Smarter Balanced, that more difficult test. We went from 18% the year before, and meeting at grade level, to 34 this last year. And then you'll notice the third grade change. Now, those are not the same cohorts, from 22% to 55, but that's significant. That speaks volumes about K3 and the kind of instruction that's going on at those levels. And then you can see as well, fourth grade, 16 to 33. And then when we look at those cohorts over time, those same group of kids, 22 to 33 is significant, 16 to 26 is significant. So our teachers are doing great work. Our third goal is behavior goal. We want to decrease our need for Tier 2 behavior interventions from 18% to 10%. That's based on our screener. And I just want to reference, our goal completely changed. Last year, our SIP goal was to increase the number of students who had zero to one referrals. We were at 63%. We wanted to get to 70. We made it to 95. That was no longer, great, we blew that one out. It was time to move along. So our goal has changed. We are looking now, we're not attacking that Tier 3 anymore. We're really looking at Tier 2. So how do we get that to 10%? Some of the things we're doing is we are using Character Strong curriculum for, we've been using it for, this is our third year, for Tier 1, so everybody gets 20 minutes a day of social emotional learning. And this year, we've purchased the Tier 2 component of that to really dig into, okay, which kids need what specifically? I'm struggling with how to make friends. There's a group for that. And this, Character Strong has a very plug-and-play, easy to use. We've got our Behavior Resource Assistance doing that at both schools, Central and Tacona. Five, six kids into a group, specifically what do you need and how are we helping you get to that? We are using the screener. We didn't end up being able to have DESA this year, which was okay for us. DESA was a little harder for teachers to use. It was cumbersome. Character Strong has an easy-to-use screener that teachers were able to do, and we've gotten them to say, what do the kids need? And those kids are going in groups now. One of the things, we were able to send a lot of teachers this last year. It is really housed in Tacoma, Washington is kind of where it started, Puyallup, and they have a national conference there every year, and we, I've sent people twice. We'll do it again this year. People who go, absolutely come back fired up, I don't need to say anything. They lead at the staff meeting and say, oh, my goodness, this is amazing. One of the things they got out of it this last summer, when I sent a group of, I don't know, five or six staff, was to increase positive ratios of interaction, which really pairs well with Safe and Civil Schools and CHAMPSS. And they have a, a kind of a theme to challenge yourself forward at the door, plus one more, four ways to connect with a kid, eye-to-eye, hand-to-hand, name-to-name, know something personal about them, and then come up with one more thing. And so that's one of the things we're working on as well in order to get after this goal. And then we plan to send them again, and we have classified staff who also are saying, hey, I'd really like to go, and I'd like to see that. And we're able to fund that with our Title I money. For early literacy, we are, this is where, honestly, this, I'd say this is where we got to put them, put the big, big push. We need to end kindergarten with our kids at level. And our, my coach and I work really closely together. We've used multiple data alignment checks, including last year's progress monitoring and this year's iReady, to make sure we're getting kids in the right spots. We have very targeted intervention. We had some curriculum we were using last year for intervention. We got Part Way In, and we both noticed, this is going nowhere. Like, the data's not changing. We can't keep doing this. So we've gotten very specific down to, do you know your letter names and which ones? Capitals and lowercase. We know for each child, which ones are you missing? Do you know your letter sounds and which ones? And do you have phonological awareness? And we're targeting those things very specifically, one-on-one. It doesn't take half an hour. You can get it in five to seven minutes a, a day to really get down to what they need to know. Our K and first took on last year as their goals, using Hegarty curriculum, which is that phonological awareness. Do I know what, you know, McDonald starts with? And can I hear that sound? They had really solid results, and so we are going to continue that this year. Our SEL implementation is going really well. I asked teachers to have a directed focus, had them pick two to four indicators. They chose those in the spring, said, think about it over the summer if you change your mind. No problem. But most of them stuck with it. They came back and said, hey, these are the ones I really want to work on. These are the ones I want to get good at. While, yes, there are 30, you, you can't work on 30 all at once with a lot of intentionality. And so people have chosen, a big one that I referenced earlier is that assessment for learning. A1 is student self-assessment. Do kids have the opportunity to assess themselves? And we're having really good conversations, getting in, and as Bob referenced, it's a lot of observations, but getting in and doing that, and then using the rubric to drive those discussions. Where are you and where do you see yourself? And how do we get to the next level? My next steps includes continuing to be in all classes every week, continuing to give regular feedback, and to complete, I have less than Bob, a little smaller, 98 evaluations across two buildings. I will add. Two buildings. Little competitive. Our points of pride and promise, I will say, our Tacona ODE report card, which is not fully released yet, but that's a strange one. I've always wondered about. Sue and I have talked about it. How do you rate Tacona that doesn't take a Smarter Balanced test and give us a score? I talked to Marcy Barnhart at the district office, and she called ODE, and they said, really, that's third grade scores. That's what we're doing. We're saying those third grade scores are really reflective of what's happening at Tacona, and the Tacona increase was tremendous. They are doing a bang-up job. We also have a huge focus on attendance. We had a 70% average at Central last year, 61% at Tacona. We know that the younger grades, kindergarten in particular, tends to have more absences. And so we're focusing on that. Got a lot of school-wide individual incentives going on. Kids are invested. Got a bulletin board in each hallway. The race car moves along. When we hit 95%, we get 10 of those. There's, there's an incentive for school-wide. Old Bob Club is going. I just was at that tonight. We've got robotics on the horizon coming up. We started that last year. We've got more of that going. A dance club, some kids have come with some ideas. And then our fifth grade leadership has really taken off this year. We've got, I think, 18 kids involved, and they are coming up with ideas, really taking on leadership to say, hey, this is what I think would be cool. We're going to have a yearbook this year, and our fifth graders are laying that out. And APSF is funding it. Every child will get a free yearbook at both Central and Tacona that our fifth graders put together. And our PTC, we're, we're a little concerned because our, it's been, a lot of our parents who have fifth graders, and we know they're about to leave us, but we got a lot of new kindergarten families this year. So we're excited about that, too. Lots of great things going on. I've probably gone longer than I should have, but can I answer any questions?
John?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
No other than, you know, I'll be hitting everybody up for this. Would volunteers in the classroom going to be helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
We will take them. I've put it in every newsletter we've done so far, and we have smart readers.
It, it's my soapbox, and I'll be hitting it every time. All right. Thanks.
You bet.
No, it just sounds like good things are happening, so.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, well, I just want to say, your behavior presentation part made me super happy. Like, that was the, I love the data and I love the, the stuff that you guys are doing. That's great. And I appreciate the detail in your report, so I'm speaking to you and all the colleagues that come after you, but I really feel like, you know, a lot of times principals come up here and say, hey, we're doing interventions, and that's sort of, and I really appreciate the detail in terms of what that looks like, so thank you. This is your second year with us, is that right?
Third.
So your third year. Okay, well, I'm glad you're here. Doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those scores are phenomenal.
Thank you so much.
I'm glad they're both here.
Yeah. Thank you both.
I'd like to welcome Mark Tim, principal at Kalapuya, to present about the great things going on there.
Yeah, thanks. If they're in competition, I got 630 kids at Kalapuya, so. Where are we going with this? Oh, there we are. So our vision, mission, our mission is build relationships, teach perseverance, expect to be challenged. That goes for students, but it also goes for staff, especially the expect-to-be-challenged. SEL can be challenging this year, last year, and I feel like the district did a good job of kind of piecing it out and kind of chunking it up and really rolling it out piece by piece, and so I think that's really helped us this year. So I'll just start with that.
Kind of new emblem, a new logo? Or you always had that?
Uh, that, yeah, a couple of years.
Yeah, I like it.
Couple of years, yeah. Most logos face to the right, but we're Kalapuya, we face to the left. So, but yeah, that, I think we, I think that's three years now.
Oh, I didn't notice it before. Sorry.
Yeah, and we have a big logo as you walk in, and also in our gym is that logo. So, yeah, we've, we're rebranding a little bit. Right into the goals. So our goal is to increase proficiency in language arts. Does this work? I gotta bend, pick this up. 44% of our students will be proficient or higher in language arts. I'm focused on state test scores. I feel like that's what the community cares about. That's what the state cares about. We also do iReady, and we have shown growth through iReady, but I'm really looking at using iReady to improve those state scores. So our goal, it doesn't sound lofty, but we have a leadership team that meets, and every department is represented on this leadership team, and we're trying to have realistic goals for our students to push them along. Our iReady fall screener shows that 30% of our students are proficient in reading. If you were to flip that, I mean, 70% aren't proficient in reading. That's one, at least one grade level behind. And about 40 of those students are two or more grade levels behind as they come to us in the fall. Some action steps, provide more time within the school day, practice silent reading. We got away from that, we got away from novels and books. Cell phones, iPads have taken over reading for pleasure or reading for information or, you know, mostly it's games on the, on the, on the cell phone. So we have pushed our language arts teams, our social studies teams, to get into the library, ordering new books, trying to get, trying to get books into kids' hands. And if they're there, I mean, if the brownies are on the table, I might eat a few. So I'm hoping that as they carry these books, they may read them. And so we're challenging teachers to provide some reading time for our students, just to get them familiar with words. Vocabulary instruction is another one. When we look at iReady, we scored really low in vocabulary. So bell ringer activities, school-wide vocabulary instruction, and then differentiated classroom instruction to support low readers. That is pulling kids into small groups, almost like the elementary model where you're providing instruction, you're assessing, you're giving some formative assessments, kids are assessing themselves, and then you pull that low, low group and really meet with them and talk to them. Some teachers are pulling one at a time, like for math, just, just to have one-on-one time with students, while the other ones are working on a project or. And so we've seen more prevention within the classroom than we have in the years past. Some graphs, ELA performance, I polled from 21 to 22 that year. We started at 29% overall, and last year, we're at 40%. We did hit 43% in 2324. Bob mentioned this last year, having, there were some things that went on last year that maybe dropped those scores, but I don't think, it's no excuse. We, we can do better than 40%. Some groups that we polled, ELD sped and multiracial groups. And as I get further, we'll talk about that multiracial group actually outperforming some of our other groups because we provided some supports for them. So all groups have made some progress. It dipped kind of down a little bit, but if you see the green, the multiracial group has improved. Overall, there's some improvement. The trend line is going up. ELD improved, and then they dropped a little bit last year. And then sped kind of went up and then down a little bit from last year for reading, the state reading test. Goal two in math, 20% will be proficient or higher in math. State scores went from, our goal was 16 to 20%. Our fall screener, 10% of our students are proficient. And again, when you reword that, 90% are not proficient as they start a school year with us. So we have a huge challenge for math, and we're trying to increase math classes and electives in math and Lego Robotics and our maker spaces in math. So again, targeted small groups instruction. We have an instructional coach that goes into classrooms and teaches teachers how to run different groups at one time. We use MyPath. MyPath is an add-on through Title Funds, and students can log in anytime and work on reading or math skills in iReady. And the goal is to try to get them to do more, do more at home. That is a challenge, but some are actually challenging themselves to do a lot, so. And then use the data to support approach to grade level content. Again, our instructional coach goes into classrooms and hands teachers scores for every single one of their students. So teachers are giving, I know what the reading level is and the math level for every single student in my class, and so then they can make decisions of how they group kids and how they instruct them. And that's the first time last year is we started that. Again, here's a graph for math performance. Again, multirace went up. Overall, trend line's going up for scores. Started in 2021, 22, 14%. We hit 17% and then dipped a little bit to 16. Again, we have a big challenge in math to get kids doing some math and getting a better score on the state test. They do make some progress in iReady, but we're not seeing a passing score or overall progress. Now, if I showed progress in state scores, it would be a different graph. This is just overall, did you pass, did you not? So you'd see different graphs, you would see more growth than passing scores. Goal three is regular attenders, attending over 90% of the time. Our goal is 80% of our students will be regular attenders. We're currently at 78%. That is up, that's right now and, or last week. That's the highest it's been in a number of years. We have family nights. We have some activities and relationship building within the school. We have SEL lessons. We have a iPhone. Communication with families. We communicate more with families. Every Thursday, we send a report, academic report home, and every Friday, we send an attendance and tardy report home to parent, to all of our parents. Kids don't love it, but the parents are getting more and more information than they ever have. So we're sending weekly progress reports home, and we've started that last year for the attendance and tardies. And a goal, again, some graphs. Overall, 59%, and we hit 64 this past year. Groups are going up. Some have dipped and kind of go back up again, but overall, we're, we're seeing a trend of improvement at Kalapuya. Step goals, and so our team gets together, and what is a realistic goal for a state score? Man, we kind of agreed on 4%. I'm hoping to hit over 4%. If we do hit over 4%, we'll adjust that goal. I mean, we'll move it up to higher than that. But in 2028, 52%, and then math, 28% for our step goals. And overall, we, I pulled out those groups again and did step goals for each group that we focused on. Attendance, again, at 20, again, we're hitting 64% right now, and our goal is 76% in 2829. So continue to increase. Again, our multiracial group is doing really well. Again, I'll speak to kind of what we're doing with them. Some STEAM, STEM then STEAM. STEAM adds the art part of it. We have expanded to two classrooms. The program was built in 2017. It wasn't ever totally finished, and we, we use it as a health room and a social studies room for the past four years, five years. And we have moved a program in there. Now she's running out of two rooms, so we have 3D printers. We have embroidery, shirt making, and we have a bunch of different stations where kids can learn. I mean, working with drywall, Bruce came in, the kid was learning how to spackle drywall and, and just skills that kids maybe need to know someday, so. And some job stuff in the future. So, anyway, hands-on experience, makers labs, academic foundation with practical skills. What this teacher is finding though is the reading skills, because it's a very independent classroom. They go and they pick what project they want to do, but the reading skills are getting in the way of that independence. And so, that's what we're trying to overcome is how do we get kids at a higher level reading so they can access these types of classrooms? And we added Lego robotics back this year, we haven't had it in five or six years. Cell implementation, teachers introduced the cell last year. Again, district kind of chunked it up into smaller bits, which I think really, really helped. We're getting in the classrooms. Like Ryan said, how do you get into classrooms with behavioral stuff? We just try to schedule it and say, hey, I need you to cover, I need to get in this classroom and we just have to go and get in as many classrooms as we can. Again, I think we have a hundred and ninety observations to do, something like that. Our focal point right now is classroom culture, student engagement, and then we'll move into purpose and assessment. And our, our PD next week is around purpose and assessment and we'll move on from there and just keep going with cell. Teachers like cell because it gives them really good feedback and it gives me, the AI stuff, it gives me feedback to then talk to the teacher. So, they're really liking it. It's a lot, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of information, but I think they're enjoying it. Priorities, improving math and reading scores. Adding some more intervention classrooms. Currently, again, we have seventy percent reading below grade level and so, we, our reading intervention classrooms are a necessity. We don't have any math intervention classrooms, we don't have a math intervention teacher at this time. That would be ideal is to add a math intervention teacher. We're doing a lot of intervention within the classrooms. Low reading scores impact behavior, we know this. And so, by focusing on reading, we're hoping to lower some of the behavioral challenges. And then the multiracial group has made great gains. We've had after-school, like tutoring sessions in Spanish and English so they can speak in both different languages and we've offered that for many years, last three or four years. And now, we have a class that offers academic support in Spanish for, for some of those kids. Next year, I think, or even this year, we are going to look into the homeless population. We have about twenty-two students who are considered homeless and they're scoring at eleven percent right now in state scores, so. And then below five percent in math. So, we have fact coming and there are going to be some tutoring sessions for those kids. They're going to pay two teachers to actually provide tutoring for the, the homeless population we have. And homeless, I mean, it's foster care, sleeping in cars or just sleeping on couches at other people's houses. So, that's what we're focused on for those kids. Oh, is that it? Oops, what did I do? There we go. Points of pride, we established a new maker space. We have, it's a big space now out of two classrooms. We've added a robotics club. The shop is used to build tables, obstacles, ramps, storage things for the Lego robotics classroom. So, they're both doing shop activities using math and also doing the robotics using math. And so, right now, we have about thirty kids in there, hopefully get more kids in there. Seventy-eight percent, seventy-eight percent is regular attenders right now. That's ten percent above last year. We have support classes for the ever-language learners. We have a Spanish elective for the first time in a long time. We actually offer an elective class in Spanish and a lot of non-native Spanish speakers are taking the class, which then improves our culture because they're practicing with all their friends and we've seen a good turnaround for that. We have BEP classes in Spanish for science and, and social studies. And then we have a lot of clubs, after-school clubs, a lot of them are even volunteer clubs. You know, we have fiber arts, video game club, soccer.
Is BEP your bilingual, is that what you mean?
Yeah, bilingual education program, yeah. So, we're still able to offer a lot of clubs after school. And we have, we probably have about a hundred, a hundred kids after school running around and then we have the, the play production going on too. Questions?
Do you have kids set academic goals?
Yeah, they, in their advisory class, yes. And then, well, we, we still have Avid too, but we have Avid strategies within those advisory classes. So, they set goals, they organize their notebooks, they get prepared to, to learn, but yes, they do.
So, this is, this isn't new this year, but I'm gonna say it anyway. The academic scores is extremely daunting, right? And I know there's a lot of factors that go into that, some of which the school district has control of and some we don't. And, you know, some come, they come to you less than, you know, you're getting a hundred percent proficient sixth graders, I get that. But at some point where the numbers are that low, I think we have, we have to kind of ask ourselves, is, is what we're doing working? Like, is this, is this how we should be doing this? It feels a little bit like you're trying to dig a trench with a spoon in some ways and I don't know. I don't know, I don't really have an endpoint to this train of thought, but it, but at that point where you're looking at, you know, I walk into one of your classrooms and, and three out of the kids in that class are proficient in math and the rest aren't. That seems to be extremely daunting. I don't know what you do about that, right? Like, that's multiple angles and multiple things. You're not going to solve that by an extra fifteen minutes down the hall in a small group, it's just not going to work.
Right.
And I don't know what you do, but, but at some point, it feels like sitting down and putting some minds together. Is there a different way we should be doing this to, to make a difference?
Right.
It's something we ought to be talking about.
Yeah, and I agree, I think it's more of a fork than a spoon. But I, I think the challenge is that the math department has pacing guides for the year and they try to stay on target with pacing guides, but they have kids at, at a second grade level and a third grade level and they're an eighth grader. And so, that's where the small groups come in. But yeah, daunting is, is a good word. I mean, for the teachers as well. But again, we have an instructional coach going into the classrooms, offering suggestions, using, using Avid strategies, QTEL strategies, trying to pull those kids in. Again, trying to add classes that use math for that. It is a challenge, but, but I agree with you, like, what else can we do, right? Like, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was one of my, my issues there and you said it much better than I was planning to, so thank you. I can just say me too on that one and move on. So, Mark, you're the first school I walked into when I saw the, the no cell phones.
Yeah.
Way before the ban came from Zid. Any change for you on cell phones or just been no cell phones continuing forward and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured.
It's been, yeah, no cell phones.
Okay.
The only change is that we, I think we are, if there is a cell phone, we're offering a little more consequences for it.
Fair, yeah. Yeah, I was so impressed at first walking in there. I mean, I talked about it many times here at the board meeting and whatnot and just thank you for pioneering that. And I think we were heading that direction anyway, but the governor helped us get over that fear and then we're seeing from some South Albany, how, wow, we're actually talking to each other, this is great. So, that's, that's such a great consequence, I love it.
Yeah, being, well, being a former special ed teacher in reading and then being a language arts teacher, just watching the kids play games on phones, it's not helping, you know? And so, getting them off their phones and if we can bore them a little bit, maybe they'll read and do some math, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's segue me to my, does the school offer any reading incentives for kids to, you know, finish novels, finish books?
Oh, yeah, we, and I think, I didn't even touch on it, but we have a, a class bank, which is a, it's a digital system and they earn money for doing tasks and, and so, they can buy stuff at the student store, they can buy stuff within the classroom, they can get passes to eat lunch with a friend that it's in a different lunch. And so, there are some incentives there, some class competitions, trying to, trying to get through iReady. Yeah, iReady lessons and so, trying to get kids to read more. And like I said, I've seen more novels and hands of kids this year than I have in the last five or six years probably.
Yeah, and if I had to pick one area to really concentrate on is reading.
Yeah.
I mean, math is a super important, but if you don't have the foundation of reading, you're in trouble.
Yeah, and currently, we have reading intervention and could we swap that for a math intervention to get a math scores up? But I agree with you, like, you know, if you get rid of reading intervention, then, then what?
Yeah, and so, the, the last thing on my list and I'll give this up is we, you know, we talk about having volunteers and I, when I talked about that, it was mainly in the, in the K-five realm. But it, kind of what you said and, and the challenges you're facing in math where ninety percent of the students are not proficient. It's something that maybe could be looked at to bring in some volunteers to take the kids, you know, if they're at a second grade level or whatever, pair them together with someone who can help them with that and take some of that burden on because it, I can imagine as a teacher, that's got to be just having that many different levels in your classroom.
Yeah.
Doesn't work.
Yeah.
It just, I mean, I'm not a teacher, but I mean, I think.
I promise you, it's hard.
Yeah.
You've got between second grade and twelfth in your class. Almost all the time, you have that kind of a spread.
Right, and so, may, maybe there's, and, and this is something that, you know, I love Ryan's idea about getting some, some people who know more than me on this and talk about how we can make up some solutions, but we need to be creative. I, I think there needs to be some, I mean, this is a, a problem that needs addressed, it's important.
Yeah, and I think the volunteer, I mean, I've been at Kalapuya twenty years and to get parent volunteers has always been a challenge. I mean, Chris could speak to that.
Yeah, maybe.
Trying to get parents in there.
Maybe from the community, we just need to put the word out and go, hey, we need some people to come in and teach, you know, some, some math skills for an hour a day or something and find some time to get that done. I, I think the community would respond, we just have to get, get a framework in place.
Right.
So, let's, let's keep working on it.
Some mentors, maybe.
Yeah, mentors, yeah, I mean, however you want to phrase it.
Because the math instruction, you got to know what you're doing.
Yes. If I may, may I give my perspective on, on the SBACK testing?
Sure.
As a student, so to represent my peers and that I've grown with and in my experience in the years of being within the district from fourth to now. I know these tests are indeed difficult and I understand there are many other factors behind success rates in the SBACK scores. However, I feel like, I feel like to get to the point, incentives really are a key point of it because it's hard and I've gone through this from fourth to junior year. It's always been a challenge for me and my peers, but also because it's hard, some students don't really care because it's not really like a paid incentive for, or from what I heard, to the teachers or to the school. Wait, do the, do the schools get paid for? They get paid for taking these tests, correct?
No.
No. So, that's something that we as students are told that nothing really happens or just statistics that are put out by the state to make your state look good. And so, students don't really care so much, if I'm being honest. And so, I believe that if incentives are involved, then the scores can be higher. And also, one, one more thing to, actually, I got a few things, sorry. Just one thing I was really curious about. In one of the slides, it was talking about the clubs and the STEAM activities, how to draw blood. I'm very curious about how that's being guided. Because how, how is?
They, yeah, they have a, a big stuffed animal and they fill it with, they usually use red dye, but it kind of stains stuff, so it's water. And then they put a syringe in the stuffed animal and they draw blood out of.
Crazy, it's a giant needle, it's like that big?
Yeah.
No, it's cool, I've actually seen it done.
Yeah.
It's good.
Bruce is out and experiences everything. Smash ball, whatever.
Bruce has been everywhere, yeah. But yeah, they have go-through stations, they go through different careers. Highly important at Kalapuya that they can explore different types of careers, for sure.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah. And my last thing is, aside from not just the academic grit and the comprehension, but also behind that is, I think we're all aware, the, the mentality and the growth mindset behind it because I know that there's, from what I've witnessed, there is unhealthy relationships behind, not behind your school life, like within, before school hours and after-school hours. I know that for some school is a safe space for many, but once they get back home, it's a rougher, a rougher time and it's not really fostering their development as mentally functioning and emotionally functioning people who, who have that effect or that mindset affects how they learn every day. I, I know a lot of people are aware of it, but I do want to highlight it that this does cause long-term effects because I can see that in my current classes. A lot of people who do take lower or standard classes, they have not so, they have unhealthy relationships occurring in their lives. And so, I feel like for myself as an, experiencing something similar. Not, I'm saying I'm in, yeah. I do feel like not just make it a goal for academics to increase, but also the liveliness of the students as well by, I suppose, recognizing not just their being a student, but also being kids as well.
Yeah, I mean, we have assemblies around character ed and stuff like that all the time, celebrating kindness and belonging and like, you know, all that stuff too, so. But after-school clubs, highly important. We have now sports in middle school, which has brought kids out of, off the streets and it's highly important. Yeah.
I appreciate that and that's good feedback. You know, they, they, we do a lot of things that are not directly tied to academics but are incidentally, we believe, help them and they don't always get highlighted. So, I appreciate you bringing that up and we'll try to make a point of bringing those to the forefront of these presentations, so.
Yeah.
Very often, school is the best place in a kid's life. And if you can keep that in mind.
Yeah, and the safest, right?
The safest, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yeah, incentives around attendance, incentives around behavior, I mean, we do all that.
All right, any other questions? Good job, Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
All right, consent agenda is next. Nobody wanted to pull anything out, so we'll just do a motion. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I can to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have motion, a second, any discussion? I just want to, I don't necessarily have discussion, but Susie, that's a really long list of classified. Is that employees that weren't, were those jobs that were not filled before the year started? Or is that just adjusting to need as the year started or?
Both.
Okay, so we wouldn't typically see that many names on a monthly basis.
We added some special classrooms.
Oh, okay.
And added classified at that and then we've added some food service in there.
Okay, just responding to the beginning of the year, that's kind of what I thought, okay.
Yes, thanks for asking.
Yeah. All right, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Now, we've got everybody's favorite and what we're here for, which is board policy. The first one is the Educational Equity Advisory Committee.
Yeah, this is, of course, things work through the legislature, then they're converted into a policy, they come to you guys. This was the adjustments that were made last spring in the legislative session to not make it a board committee, to not have it videotaped at the meetings. This was to ensure that it would be easier to recruit members.
As we go through these board policies, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So, those were included in the consent agenda.
Oh, they were.
Those were.
Okay. Oh, good.
We moved.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay, thank you.
The new business that moved into.
We are way ahead.
Oh, good, yes.
Into reports.
I missed that, thank you. And for, so that you guys know, I asked Chris, when it comes to a policy and consent agenda, if it's a staff-driven policy, I'd like, I'd like it out of the consent agenda. In other words, if these guys came up with it, but if it's legislative-based and it's something we have to do because of law, then it may as well go consent. So, that's kind of how we're doing that for the most part. And then, of course, you can always pull something out of consent. All right, so we are on reports, Genuine Foods update.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Tim Wildsmith and Scott Lewis to come to the podium. And as they're coming up here, I'll, I'll continue on. Tim is Vice President of Client Services at Genuine Foods, all the way from Alabama tonight. Had a little layover, where was that at?
Atlanta, actually.
A little layover, but, but he did get, make it here today. So, Scott and Tim's going to give you a little update on program implementation. I'll drive, are you going to drive?
I don't know. You want to drive?
I got it.
Okay, great, well, thank you all for the time. I have met with many of the board members when we first presented, Ember awarded the, the contract in May. So, we wanted to come today, it's a little early to talk about the overall success. So we wanted to come today, it's a little early, to talk about the overall success of the program. We have data to report on the first 20 days of school. You know, the the way the school year works with 173 service days, the first 20 you're kind of ramping, the last 20 you're declining as as early dismissal and things like that happen. So we see some really positive trends and some really exciting things we'd like to share and some opportunities as well. So one thing we have done is that we did poll parents and and got some survey results on what they're seeing early. This was done the second week of school, so again, an early test to set benchmarking so we can do this survey again, you know, in a few months and then again in spring. Seventy-nine percent of the students are using the free meal program or some aspect of the free meal program, either breakfast or lunch on a daily basis. And about 78% of the families are reporting satisfaction either at, in kids' word, it's okay, or 48% are saying they love or like the meal. So we're seeing, you know, we feel those are really strong numbers, but what this baseline will do will help us for future trends and really establishing that. Obviously, top favorites are pizza, chicken, sandwiches, nuggets, tacos, pasta, and the breakfast items. So we, you know, what you would expect, but we are doing, some of these items are already have been implemented from scratch cooking, using different fresh ingredients to make them as compared to past years, and so we'll highlight some of that success in the numbers. This graph here is a little hard to read on on this, but what it shows is the first it's week two through week six, so it's four weeks of school. The first week we discounted because it's partial week, so these are the first four full weeks. And what it shows is that lunch is up across the district, a little more than 2% on an aggregate, and breakfast is having a trend down, not not anything to be worried about. Breakfast is down by about 200 total meals per day and we can account for 130 of those. We're from South Shore Elementary and they eliminated a breakfast in the classroom program. And so then, you know, it really limits that that decrease in breakfast when you when you pull that out. But we'll dive a little bit deeper into some of these numbers. So overall, as we're talking through, you know, you had a slight enrollment decrease of around 370 students. Obviously, we heard tonight from some of the principals about attendance and and we're gonna start working to track that to see, you know, what we're up against because the goal is to serve more children fresh, healthy meals. And whatever we can do to drive those drive those meals, get children the nutrition they need to be successful in the classroom is what we want to do. So we want to collaborate with the district, as we have been, on, you know, how do we track that data? How do we help drive it? How do we help improve it? The good news is that lunch is up. Lunch is up overall approximately, it was at last year, the same four weeks, lunch was at 52.2% participation, which means 52% of the students that were enrolled were eating lunch. This year, 55.8. So it's a 3.6 data points participation, but it's actually a 6.8 or 7% overall growth when you do it from a percentage standpoint. So that is a really good success from what we're seeing there. And I'll just give you an example. Those numbers for those four weeks, we were serving about 4,700 lunch meals per day and we are seeing those numbers continue to increase and we even had a lunch week, two weeks ago that is not reported here because this is just September data, where we had close to 25,000 meals served during the course of a week for lunch. So really, really some huge success. Some top performers Lafayette Elementary, Timber Ridge Middle School and South Albany High. Elementary showed the strongest overall push with lunch, which is tremendous news. The elementary students that that are eating more lunch, their their families are seeing the difference in the program. Those students continue to progress through the the district and it and stay in the program and they continue to eat the meals from, you know, here on out. And that's really what you could would have captured that audience at the earliest grade you can. Middle school lunch is slightly flat, up about 1%. And high school, this was a, you know, bit of a surprising number and I think we're hearing and seeing some of the the high school feedback, but it's up 4.2% compared to the same time last year. And that's with the cell phone policy change and, you know, juniors and seniors is, you know, kind of flooding off campus to 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 take part of, you know, use their phones. But but they're 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 coming back and they're eating and we're working on some implementing some carts to put, you know, put in their walkways, to put in the path that you get grabbing goes, make sure that they do eat, you know, because the meals are available to them. And we're working very closely with with the district on, you know, getting those things implemented as soon as we can. This is a just a really exciting trend. I just want to show you from the second week, we were just under 22,000 meals, lunch meals per week. Then you can see it climbing every week to week five was 23.6 and the we, like I said, we hit lunch of 24,447 two weeks ago. So and last week's data is not compiled yet. So we're we're continuing to see those numbers grow, which is really highlighting successes, highlighting that that, you know, people like, you know, Skylar are taking their, you know, telling their friends about the food and saying, let's take a time to eat, this is good, this is quality and it's available to us for free. And so that's a that's a really exciting trend that we are happy to see. Breakfast is a little bit different story. Again, this is the when you talk about percentage changes, it's because it's a much smaller number, you know, only sort of 4,500 lunches a day roughly, you know, breakfast is about 2,000, you know, breakfast a day. So you're dealing with smaller math and we're off by 216 breakfasts per day compared to prior year, but 130 of those were coming out of Sunrise, South.
South Shore.
South Shore Elementary. And, you know, from the breakfast in the classroom change. Middle school, we've targeted, actually Scott and I are working on it with the team. There's three or four schools we want to we want to really focus on breakfast and really move this needle because there's only three or four that are actually negative. The rest of them there are are all positive, but it's such a small number, the percentage is skewed. High school, again, props, high school students are eating and high school breakfast is up 12% year over year.
What are you feeding them for breakfast?
Go right ahead.
Breakfast can include, different schools can be breakfast sandwiches, French toast, casserole at the higher higher ed, middle and high schools, French toast sticks. We have a pick two where they can pick cereal, yogurt, what's the other one I'm looking for?
Fruit.
Of course, and cheese sticks, so forth.
Okay, thank you.
And breakfast for scratch cooking on some of those breakfast sandwiches and products?
Yep.
Okay, that's that's the words we want to get out. All right, this is just some feedback from families. We wanted to to show you, this was just some commentary that that we had. You know, it's really, and I'm not gonna read these, but you know, you 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 look for some things, like my kid has voiced gratitude for fresh vegetables and salad to be available. My my child is trying something different for the first time and is enjoying it. So we're really excited to get some very positive feedback from from the families. And I'm gonna turn it over.
Okay, some of our success highlights. Staff has been excited about and engaged about a lot of the changes taking place at many of the schools as we bring on more staff and we get more folks accustomed to things. One staff member said to me at one of the schools, at the beginning of the year, they were very nervous about this, they weren't sure. But as times gone on, they've gotten more used to the changes and they're getting a lot of thank yous from students and that food service is so much better this year than last. And scratch cooking training, as we're continuing to do. In fact, I think there's a picture of our chef Jack when he was in town last week, doing small trainings wherever we can.
Scott, can you tell us about the picture, sir?
Sure. Let's see, that is Chef Jack at South Albany High School doing a pesto grilled cheese with tomato that we did last Wednesday. Fresh basil, which is unbelievably expensive right now, but so good. I mean, it made the whole kitchen smell fantastic and kids flocked to it at a number of the schools. Surprisingly, the small kids didn't like it, but anywhere above fifth grade and above, they loved it. So it was it was great. Got a lot of positive feedback with that, along with the following day where we did an Asian noodle bowl with meatballs made from scratch. So it was a very, very big hit. And we have a crew here that had used some fresh products, some fresh chicken, making that into a dish. Second picture, third picture over is some homemade, house-made croutons that we're starting to make at many of our kitchens. And then the last is the calzone that many of you had tonight. At, again, we can't, we make those those primarily right now at South Albany High School and they're gone within five minutes of us of our opening. Some of our success highlights include new marketing at many of the schools, since you can see a little bit brighter and drawing a little bit more attention, things we're continuing to work on and improve on. Scratch cooking implementation, and you can see some photos here, 2,000 from scratch meatballs made on a Friday, cooked and served Monday at many of the elementaries in meatball sub sandwiches. And you can see the different different stages there, the many of the meatballs and then after they were cooked and then in the final product in the sandwich. In addition to that, culinary training continues every time our chef is in town and we're looking to ramp that up more with our weekly regional calls. Every day, the menu changes, so we have continued different items and looking at new items to to bring in and and make available to our students. And menu menu standardization and local sourcing is underway. As Bob from Sunrise mentioned earlier, the Liberty apples from a sweet home farm that we're bringing in, that they had a bumper crop this year, so they were happy to happy to have us take some of those and and share those with our students. Highlights and next steps, more transfer transitions to scratch-made meals across all sites. This is an ongoing process, not the same at every single school, but everyone is coming along. We have many schools that are, for the first time in eight to, well, West Albany High School, first time in eight years, they cooked ground beef from raw and made a taco meat. In the wet, in the South Albany kitchen, the first time in 17 years, they cooked ground meats from raw and now chicken thighs from raw. And the difference is in the taste, as you can attest to. So we're having great success for that and a lot of fun. The staff is is very excited about these things. And stronger collaboration across the across the culinary background here. So it's a it's all a positive.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about, as we close here, in in my work of overseeing the program, I see four key components that are setting up this department for success. The first one is genuine onsite and engaged. So I've had more people from genuine onsite in the last month than I did in the previous vendor we had in two years. So they're here to support us, they're here to make sure we help us be successful, they're listening, they're partnering with us to solve problems. I've been really impressed with their support thus far. They are providing better products as well, okay? Also, regional meetings, Scott mentioned this. This is a spot, we we have three regions across the district, Memorial, West and South. These were set up to really problem solve. There's three easy questions. What are we doing well? What do we need? What's not going well? And what do you need more support with? Those are the three agenda items on each of those calls. They're 30 minutes. I see staff problem solving, I see them having success, sharing their success. Last week, we had a staff member from Memorial over at West helping coach and share some of the practices they were doing to Memorial. So I see a great collaboration happening through there. That's gonna help them continue to grow and have success moving forward. Staff are proud of their work and they're motivated, so they're enjoying serving better items to kids, make a great component for success. And then we have hit hard promotional activities, one, to reinforce reinforce the great work that's coming out of these kitchens, but also promote the product. Done a lot of promotions, Becca's helped with us, Genuine teams helping us, just creating a calendar and being organized about what positive communications are we sending out on a regular basis. So we're really trying to promote this program, getting more kids to eat. That's the, what was the name of that dish again? The Asian salad?
Noodle.
Yeah, so that was a big hit in a lot of the schools as well, so really proud of the work that the department's doing. More proud even of the staff that's doing that work. They're working hard, but I think they're they're having more fun doing it too. That's the only picture that we haven't made yet on the slide deck. So I don't know what that one's what that one's called, but.
Just the closing slide.
Okay, all right.
Cucumber delight, I think is the name of that dish.
Yeah, it's very good. Any questions you have?
No more just comments. I mean, thank you so much. We're hearing positives all across the board. We got the sample of pizza tonight, you guys held on me in the calzone, you didn't talk about that, but you made up for it, it was really good. Thank you for helping to improve the students' culinary experience and I look forward to seeing where we go.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the support.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, I got two slides left, I forgot. This is this is Sal's kitchen, they had a message for you. It's short. Oh, no, no audio. Shoot, we didn't test enough. See if she can try one more. Kathy's driving for me out there.
Oh, my name is Lori, I work. Oh, my name is Lori, I work at South Albany High School and we're going to introduce you to the new products that we are proud to be making here for the kids. Absolutely a big hit. They, we have to increase two pans a day, so we're up to like 118 alone of the servings of the cheesy calzone. Again, I want to thank my lovely staff, they're wonderful to work with, they're willing to go above and beyond to create these wonderful products.
In our next, we have another message from Memorial Kitchen.
Hi, my name is Deborah, this is Memorial Kitchen staff and we have started cooking from scratch and I have an amazing team and they have started with raw chicken and raw hamburger. They make their own sauces in our kitchen now. We have Debbie, she does salad bars, she likes to make it nice and pretty. I have her doing some new recipes, salad recipes that the children love. And Kathy, she does a lot of the nacho line with some taco chicken meat, taco seasoning in it and her ground beef.
Kathy loves the new hamburger.
Yes. And 80, 80 over here does a lot of the transport. She makes a lot of sauces and meats from scratch for transport for the elementaries and for the middle school. We also like to help our middle school out in North Albany as well and West Albany, we're making changes. This is our lovely kitchen and the staff is just amazing and they love all the changes.
All right, thank you. Okay, looks like we're at Equity Update.
Good evening and hello, I'm excited to present to you all for the first time and I look forward to some questions, Skylar. So this year, going into my third year, these are kind of the three anchors that are guiding my through line. I'm really wanting to continue on with connection and belonging for every student. I feel like we've done affinity groups, those are continuing, we're working on expanding some more events and things for their families, et cetera, which I'll speak to. I've had the honor and privilege of being a part of walkthroughs at all levels. I really enjoy working with the teams of administrators and hearing directly from teachers, like seeing how they're following the rubric and hearing from students, how they're being impacted by the the stuff that they're learning and also noticing some equity trends, I suppose. And now that's something I'll be looking at throughout the whole year. Community partnership, we are really digging back into that. My Welcome Centers staff has a new person who is really focusing on our Latino outreach and our Black Student Success Grant is. And our Black Student Success Grant is also allowing us to do some more targeted support for our Black families. This grant was awarded last year. We did recently get notified that it would be reduced by seventy percent. But I've been working with Jason Dorsett to figure out how we can continue to strategize and figure out which programs will be prioritized. But the goals that we have here at GAPS4, this grant, are really to strengthen student voice and identity through listening sessions, through affinity groups, through outreach opportunities for them in community with each other across school districts, as well as historical visits through like Black pioneers, walking tours, AAYLC, et cetera. Really looking to grow family partnerships. I know historically, there was an open forum for students of Black parents, or Black parents of Black students. Wow. And we got mixed feedback. And so we really wanted to do something a little bit more intentional. We're gonna be working on doing some events to do some more natural community building. And then I have continued, or will continue to do more staff learning around bias and representation for elevating our student voice. I was able to go to our Black Student Union last week and hear from them. And I hope to continue to just elevate their opportunity to share with their administrators and teachers what their experiences have been like. These are the events for the Black family outreach that'll be happening throughout the year. Roger Nyquist will be donating time at Lake Shore Lanes. If anyone would like to come bowling, that will be happening and there will be pizza, et cetera. And I will continue to talk about these as the year goes on and you are all invited to attend. This will be K through twelve events and administrators will also be invited. Before my time here in GAPS, we had cafecitos for Latino families, which are basically like coffee hours to engage. We found that the attendance kind of dropped off. And so we have been doing some very targeted outreach to our Latino families to see specifically what topics they wanted those cafecitos to be centered around. And we got a lot of feedback. And this past Wednesday, we had one around tag. And our curriculum instruction coordinator Stacy Lee came and presented to our families. And we had about fifteen different families, a couple of kiddos. And it seems like they're gonna continue to be coming. We have IEPs coming next. That was another thing that families really wanted a better understanding around. Either Krista or someone from her team will be coming to do like an open forum. It's really important specifically that our bilingual assistants and folks who support IEPs in the district. It's really challenging technological terms that sometimes are hard to translate and make clear. And so we just wanna make sure that if there are any questions lingering, that we have a safer, more holistic space to have those discussions versus like in the meeting when you're maybe feeling a little intimidated and there's a time crunch. Our Welcome Center, as I said, has grown, kind of. And that we used to have a staff member who was overseas, working and traveling. And while they were a breadth of knowledge, I am really grateful to have one more person on site who is incredibly passionate about our student body and our families. And she worked at Sunrise, worked at Juntos before. And not only that, she just brings like sunshine to the Welcome Center. So it's also really positively impacting the culture in the building and that's great. And we've talked about this a little bit since last year. And you all just adopted this policy or committee. We have our first event meeting tomorrow. Well, we had our first one in February. Oh, my gosh, February, when was it?
September.
September, wow. I'm a little tired, I apologize. I've been up since four. We had our first one in September, but it was not as attended just because not everyone's schedules aligned. But these are the four that we will be having moving forward. I'm really excited to have both of our student board members be a part of that. I feel that we will receive lots of valuable input. And my goal would also be that this committee will interface with some internal work that is happening just to kind of figure out if there's shared goals from community as well as internal folks that we can't collaborate together and try to push the needle on some stuff that's shared goals. Additionally, with Superintendent Gardner's goal of communicating, these will, you'll receive consistent updates about the work that we're doing, what the goals that we settle on as a team, et cetera. In terms of the internal equity committee, I put out some feelers after hearing from staff over the past few years that they wanted more of an opportunity to engage in the work either themselves or their own professional learning or with one another. I put out a survey asking like what specific things they wanted me to focus on with them. A lot of them responded with culturally responsive teaching practices. They wanted more examples of how bias might show up for them personally and how they can recognize microaggressions in the workplace or within their classroom and tactics to work on micro interventions when it's happening in the classroom or in the hallways. It's really easy to go into Gecko brain mode. And so practicing some terms, you can say, making sure that they fully understand our process so that kiddos are getting the support they deserve and that students who might not fully understand the ways in which their behavior is causing harm have the opportunity to learn that as well. We will also be continuing our partnership with WestEd and their culturally responsive and equitable sustaining systems. They are interfacing with our Regional Racial Equity Group. And we have asked as well what types of training staff want from them. We just reviewed that data today, myself and WestEd. So we will be planning that. And those dates will be coming out as well. You are always welcome to come and see what those are about. The student affinity groups will be continuing. I have dedicated part of my budget to each of the secondary schools to support this work, either in food supply or activity, bus fees, et cetera, for cultural events, whatever that may be. It's gonna look different by building the supports, VSCs and LSCs, cultural clubs, as well as other affinity groups that exist before my time. We are continuing our partnership with Heather Carmichael of Weaving Fall. She helps support some of these. As in my first year, myself and Ethan were supporting it. And it was like, took up all my time. While it was beautiful and exciting, I needed some support. I'm really grateful as well that Hannah Edens, also of Weaving Fall, will be supporting more as Heather is. Her kiddos are done in the district and I think she's wanting to move on. So after this year, Hannah will be taking over. And we really are trying to work on giving those students more of an opportunity to understand either their own identity, if they didn't grow up in a space where that was explored, also receiving connection to one another and more agency in their school experience. And additionally, so something that I know Suzie heard a lot about from her affinity groups when she was at West is that the types of behavior that we see getting stronger in the middle school and high school started in elementary. And this is a time when kiddos' brains are developing and they're still kind of testing the waters, figuring out what exactly certain words mean. I know that I often think I'm funny. My husband would disagree at times, but sometimes we don't understand our jokes, how they might hurt others. So I have had the privilege of going to, at this point, about five elementary schools. I'll continue to go through all of them. We are reading a book about different kiddos and perspectives. It touches on disability. It touches on food choice in your lunch, et cetera. It gives them an opportunity to reflect back on maybe a time when they have had their feelings hurt, maybe a time they've hurt someone else's feelings. And then we go into some words that we just don't use at school, like the N-word, monkey, the types of words that unfortunately do come up. And we give a little bit of context as to why in an age-appropriate way. This is a hyperlink to that lesson. It takes about an hour. The feedback has been amazing, including from teachers. Teachers have reported back to me as well that the conversations have continued in their classrooms. And it allows a third point for them if it comes up to say, hey, you know, Bruce, we've talked about this. Do we need to reflect on X, Y, Z? I'm just saying. And I forgot to bring art off of my fridge, but I've been receiving art from kiddos too, which has also filled my bucket. So, yeah. And there's candy involved and that's great. And that's what I have for you this evening. Any questions? No pressure.
I have one, you know, as I do. Do you plan to bring in guest speakers or professionals that, in the region, who speak upon these topics into schools to speak about equity and diversity topics?
Yeah, so something that Bruce and I had talked about with the Black Student Board is maybe doing a Black Excellence Symposium where we would have some guest speakers. I know that there are also some ethnic studies professionals in the area that have expressed wanting to come and speak to folks in the past. WestEd is also a strong proponent for trainings, et cetera. Remisia is someone who we are hoping to tap. She's a professor at LBCC and also sits on our city council. But also open to collaborating if there are people that students specifically want to hear from.
Kelsey, we had talked over the years about bias incident reporting. And you probably don't have any numbers, obviously, from this year. We're just getting started. But I just wanted to check and make sure that you're comfortable that there's a good methodology in place, that we're gathering that data, that people are being transparent, so that we can try to get a handle. I mean, we've talked about this and we're not afraid of big numbers because it'll help us solve the problem. So just curious if you feel like we've got a handle on that or are people still being a little resistant? Or how's that going?
I think that I am incredibly passionate about this and not everyone has centered their career around it. And for some of us, it can take some time to get into the swing of it. And I think sometimes too, depending on the student's comfort in sharing, that has at times been a barrier. But I do, for the most part, feel fairly confident that when items are brought to principals, that if they don't know how to handle it, they know how to reach out and what that process looks like. We did have some new elementary principals come on and I immediately met with both of those individuals, have run them through the process. They have reached out immensely. And actually, these lessons came as a result of one of our newest principals at Liberty expressing the want for more support. And so I think at the very least, they also feel comfortable to reach out if they need it. I think that this process holds some level of accountability to a societal issue that has existed before any of us were born and will likely continue as we're worm food. But I think that through support like this as well, I'm hoping that through time, we'll see a better understanding in a time when it's crucial for them to understand that when we're testing out jokes, that maybe some of them just can say internal thoughts. And hopefully that throughout time, we'll see a little bit of a shift. So I don't, I mean, the numbers, we haven't run them for this year because we're just starting.
Sure.
I suppose we'll see how that continues. And that's kind of like a, yes, and?
I would say that while the issue certainly predates us and will postdate us.
Yes.
I do think that the students seeing how the school responds to it is an important change to make.
Totally.
And I feel like hopefully that's continuing, that they see we take this seriously and that it's not acceptable when every kid needs to feel safe and seen and heard in our schools.
Yes, and I think the biggest noticing for me is hearing from teachers specifically as well that they want more hands-on practice. Because oftentimes, in the moment, they struggle with what to say. And that can also impact students and that's no one's fault. And I look forward to offering them more opportunity to understand and practice that.
Alright, cool. Also, oh, go ahead, sorry. You know that somebody from your committee needs to be on the budget committee? Are you aware of that?
Yes, yes, yes. We're working.
You're working on that?
Yeah, I have a couple of folks, Jay and I have been in touch about it, so.
Okay, cool.
Appreciate the reminder.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Next is?
Division twenty-two.
Division twenty-two.
I know that you've all been anxiously awaiting this presentation. This will be far superior to any of the school presentations we've had tonight. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. So Division twenty-two standards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is to ensure that our programming across the district meets all state expectations. And I'll go through just some general process and some changes that we'll have to make for this upcoming school year. Each year, we collaborate with the whole group across the district to make sure that we are meeting all Division twenty-two standards with an internal tracking tool because it does span the full realm of all programming across the district. So we rely on experts and staff members to help us out in this process. Why? The standards that Oregon Legislature or the State Board has determined must be met in order to be a standard school district. By going through this process, it signals our commitment to providing a high-quality educational experience and equitable opportunities for all students. And these assurances process offers an opportunity for districts not in compliance to reflect on areas in need of attention and receive technical assistance. So there are some areas that we did not meet. Some will be very obvious and some are some things that we'll need to work on a little bit. This is an example of the tracking sheet that's used. There are a whole series of indicators. But what this does is it identifies the rule number and title of the things we have to meet. You'll see a summary. Those, that's the descriptor of what has to be met. And then we collect evidence and identify who's responsible for helping complete that part of the process and then whether or not we're in compliance of that particular standard. It's a combined accountability model, meaning that there is both local and state accountability. District, as a district, we must report what we've done to the school board by November first. We're gonna make that date. And then we need to make a report available to the district website so the public can see if we've met those standards or not. We must then submit our assurances to ODE by the fifteenth. And then ODE will review our submission and follow up with districts that have self-reported, any out-of-compliance issues. Okay? What this ultimately revolves around are five essential components that the state is looking for us as a district to make sure we're meeting. One of which is high-quality learning experiences. Two, aligned and focused educational systems. Three, engaged partners and communities. Four, safe and inclusive schools. And five, that we're committed, that we have a committed and supportive staff. If you're interested, this presentation is in the packet. You can see what this looks like on a much more detailed scale. But these are the five areas that the standards are broken into. So to give you some examples in terms of high-quality learning experience, that has to do with diploma requirements and instructional materials that are available to kids. Two, aligned and focused educational system. That's making sure we're meeting our required instructional minutes and that we have a comprehensive counseling program in the district. Engaged partners and communities. Do we have a process in place if someone should need to file a complaint? And then what does, are we meeting our Educational Equity Advisory Committee goals and guidelines? Safe and inclusive schools would be things like, do we have substance use prevention and intervention plans? And are we implementing the every student belongs language that's in our board policy and as part of state policy? And finally, committed and supportive staff. Are we following the state-guided teacher and administrative evaluation program? Okay? There are many more in each of those areas, but those were just highlights so you can have an idea of what each of those five areas has. What happens if a district is out of compliance? ODE will review our proposed corrective action plan. So anytime we're out of compliance, we submit a plan about how we're gonna correct that. ODE then looks at that. If the plan is not approved as submitted, they will contact us and provide technical assistance and support and guidance to refine that plan. Once we have an approved plan in place, ODE specialists may continue to reach out to us to make sure that we're meeting the goals of the plan as submitted. The corrective action, it must be completed by the beginning of the next school year. So if we have corrective action that needs to take place, you have one year to rectify that. Okay? If a district fails to come back into compliance after an opportunity for corrective action, ODE may withhold a portion of the district state school fund monies. So it's important, A, that we first meet as many of these as possible. Two, if we don't, we have an adequate plan. And three, once the plan is set, we actually follow through and meet that plan. Okay? So, report for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So this is always a retrospective look about what we did last year. So rules that were new for twenty-four, twenty-five. The graduation requirements for nine through twelve instructional program, which includes personal finance education. for 9 through 12 instructional program, which includes personal finance education and higher education and career path skills content standards. That was new last year, and then a planned K-12 instructional program for social and emotional learning. So how are we doing SCL instruction across the K-12 program? The menstrual dignity for students, this was a two-parter. Initially, we needed to make sure that we had free and accessible menstrual products in every school bathroom, K-12. The new part was that there were instructions on the use of products within bathrooms, and that menstrual health education is taking place as part of our health and sexuality education. Both of those are fully in place. Some waivers for 2425. The essential skills requirement for graduation, that has been waived throughout those years, meaning that students do not have to meet the essential skills in order to get a high school diploma. That will not come back into effect until the 2627 school year. We still offer local performance assessments to demonstrate essential skills in reading, writing, speaking, to make sure that we're, and math, to make sure that we're meeting those goals. And then the essential skills assessment for English language learners will not come into effect until the 2728 school year. So they are coming up, but we just don't have to meet those at this point in time. We did submit some waivers as a district. The new graduation requirement for students to earn the personal finance education and higher education and career path skills, based on the state guidelines, that would be in place for this year's juniors. We were able to put a waiver in place, so it doesn't take effect until the class of 2028. That has been approved by the state, and we're good to go. So this year, sophomores will be taking the education and career path skills, and then when they're seniors, they'll take the personal finance, financial education course, and they will meet all the required graduation requirements. The other thing is, is the postponement of purchase of state-adopted instructional materials. We have submitted a waiver to postpone the purchase of 612 language arts curriculum. The district went through an adoption process and purchased K-8 materials, and just, sorry, they purchased K-8 materials, and we did not purchase 9 through 12. It's just listed as that, as a big block in the requirements. And then what we'll end up doing is we'll utilize the process of an independent adoption this school year. So what that means is that the current language arts curriculum, we have 912, doesn't meet the state standards, and we will go through that process and essentially re-adopt what we're already using, okay? Rather than purchasing the new, a new curriculum. The last one is instructional materials adoption, is postponing the adoption of a health and science curriculum to the 2526 school year. Technically, we should have done that last year. We should have gone through that adoption process for health and science. We did not do that. There were a few other things that were going on last year that kind of prevented us from engaging in a full-year-long process to adopt new curriculum. That will take a board action, which will be presented to you later tonight. So what we're essentially asking is that we can have you approve the postponement of that, so we do that this year to be put in place for the 2627 year. Some corrective action will be needed for 2526, some of which I just described to you, that we have an independent adoption of the 912 language arts curriculum, and that will be completed this year by February of 2026. And then the adoption process for the science and health curriculum, which would also be completed by June of 2026. So we will be able to have an abbreviated process for language arts, because again, it's what we're currently using. We'll need to make sure that it's meeting all current state standards, so that'll be an abbreviated process. It would be a full process for science and health. Our other corrective action is we did not meet the required instructional time for all grades last year. We met for grades K through 11. You'll see the required number of hours in K-5 and 68 is 900. We exceeded in both of those areas. 911, 9 through 11 is 990. We exceeded in grades 9 through 11. We did not meet in grade 12, so we need to have correction action, and the corrective action is don't have a strike. So that will let us meet our required number of minutes, okay? Looking ahead for the 2627 school year, there are some changes that'll take place that we'll have to address. The Educational Equity Advisory Committee, we are currently doing that. It's been a phase-in process for districts across the state, and now it's in our part with districts that have less than 10,000 students. We're actively pursuing that, and we have those, we'll have those meetings in place, so that will be no problem to meet that particular standard. The next one is administration of state assessments. The state has added the SEED survey, which is for students as a part of state testing. We will be able to administer that. And then the added mention of ELPA screener as a required OSAS component. This isn't new, it's just making the rule more complete, and we do that preparation in the fall each year and administer the ELPA throughout the course of the year. And then added clarification that districts must abide by ODE decisions regarding student test records. So there's just some clarifying facts about how we share state test results and how we administer exams. Lastly, there are going to be new evaluation standards for administrators, and I know that Suzie and her team will make sure that we're meeting all of those required evaluative tools for our administrators in the district. I'm pretty sure ours, that we currently have match, so that will not be a very big change for us. We just need to make sure that we have aligned those administrative evaluations to the updated standards by the 30, September 30th of 2027, which we shouldn't have a problem doing. And that's it.
Any questions?
So the state is determining which materials are?
They have an approved list?
I know they have a list, but is the sequence approved?
Yes, the state has an adoption cycle by content area, and we were supposed to have adopted the science and health.
Right.
Curriculum last year, and we were just not able to do that.
I think it used to be the district that determined that. I think that's what I remember, but just, just curious about how that worked.
Yeah, the state has a, they have a regimented list, and it's generally on a seven-year, it's a five-year cycle.
Yeah.
And they usually have two years of postponement to make it seven. But if you get out of sequence, then you start having to adopt multiple curricula in a single year. So we put a big focus on purchasing math last year to have it put in place for this year, so that was a big, big step.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's it. I would just make sure we continue to try to get back on track there, because getting behind that eight ball can be really difficult. So, okay. Anything else? All right, riveting, Division 22, awesome.
All right.
Integrated guidance.
Thank you. The 2024 Integrated Programs Annual Report Presentation, this needs to be presented each year at the end of Q4, which is an overview of our programming from the entire year last year. So each year, we have to report out an annual report, and there are a few narrative questions that we need to respond to. In addition to that, throughout the course of the year, we respond to several narrative questions and some ranking questions on goals that have been outlined by the state. In addition, we need to report our spending each quarter to make sure that what we proposed as a budget is what we're actually spending. And this would be for our student investment account dollars, our high school success dollars. It also includes our CSI and TSI funds, early literacy grants. So this is how we report out on all of the grants within Integrated Guidance. This gives you an idea of what SIA is looking at. Their main criteria is providing a well-rounded education, that we're advancing equity, that we're engaging the community, and we're strengthening district systems and capacity. And then it's broken down into further pieces. Ultimately, we're looking to have, we have to report out on quarterly program and financial expenditures. And then the last thing is we have an annual performance review, which is what I'm presenting to you tonight. So by statute, we review our own progress on an annual basis through an annual progress report and financial audit. We then present our annual report to the board at an opening meeting with opportunity for public comment, okay? It's used to ask questions. We can't include this on a consent agenda item. And then we'll have to post this report to the district website. So what we are looking at is our longitudinal performance growth targets. So in year one of the biennium, we kind of outline what we're going to use and how we're going to look at progress, and that we're reviewing that over the course of time. Last year, I gave this presentation to kind of share where we were at, and these are the performance growth targets that we're looking at, which include four-year graduation rate, five-year completer rate, regular attenders, ninth grade on track, and third grade English language arts proficiency, or a third grade reading test. In year two of the biennium, we actually review these metrics compared to the previous year, and then we are asked to share reflection on our progress, which I'm going to do this evening. So the narrative questions are listed as you review your progress, markers overall reflection responses and reflect on plan implementation, how do you see your progress, contributing to the outcomes and strategies in your plan, and your longitudinal performance growth targets. So what I've done is I've broken this out, and how we're meeting some of these goals and things we've done very well. So through SIA monies and focus, we've established a K-8 academic multi-tiered system of support, and that's provided more effective interventions to promote growth in reading. Third grade reading scores were 41.7% as a district in 2324. They went down slightly to 39% in 2425. To go a little farther, four of our 13 elementary schools increased between 4 and 9%, with two schools remaining at the same performance level. And when we look at our iReady screener data, 13 of our 21 schools posted over 100% annual growth, which means they've demonstrated more than one year of growth in reading. And when you put that in perspective to what Calipuya presented tonight, they did not meet in state testing, but they have a lot of students that are coming in below grade level to start with. So when we're using an iReady screener like this, it's showing that we're making up multiple years of growth in one year to try to catch students up to grade-level performance on their state test. And that's kind of the disconnect that you saw presented by all three schools tonight, right? Our second narrative question was, where have you experienced barriers or challenges or impediments to progress towards your outcomes and strategies in your plan that you could use support with? So where do we show some challenges and what can we get help with? Of course, district regular attenders, this is always a challenge, and we know that all of our schools are focusing on attendance. As a district, we showed a decrease of 2% from 67 to 65. That's over all 21 schools. If you look a little bit deeper at the data, 12 of our 21 schools had an attendance rate greater than the state average, which was 67%. Five of our 21 schools had between 1 and 1% and 7% increase in attendance. 14 of 21 schools showed between 1 and 8% decrease. So we did have a large number of our schools that dropped in their overall attendance performance. And we had two schools that showed no change. Some things that we need to focus on, and we may need some support with, is proactive work with families around our attendance measures, ongoing interventions for chronic non-attenders, and engaging in our attendance community of practice through the ESD. So these are some things that we're currently working on this year to put in place at all of our schools. And the last question was looking at our overall metrics for our focal groups. So remember, that was five-year completers, ninth grade on track, I'll go over those. And our focal groups consist of our students of color, special education students, students that are receiving ELL services, students in poverty, and those that are homeless. So those are considered focal groups. When we compare those groups to the rest of the student population, we showed a 2.1% increase in five-year completers, which is great. Our focal groups had a 3.7% increase in their ninth grade on track, which means they're earning six or more credits by the end of their ninth grade year, a 7.9% increase in third grade reading. So those are for all of our focal groups. And our focal groups showed a 10.2% increase in attendance, which are all huge growth indicators. Our greatest area of growth has been seen in our attendance rate, showing 4.9% growth for all students. And yet, we had a 10.2% growth for our focal groups, our most marginalized kids, which is fantastic. The only area where we showed a slight drop was in our full-year cohort graduation rate, dropped by 3% with our focal groups. That was the only decline in performance we saw with our long-range performance growth targets, okay? And that, our district rate still increased, but just with these focal groups, we showed a slight dip. And that's what I have for you this evening.
Okay, any questions? Good job.
Fantastic.
Very clear presentation, no questions asked.
Either that, or it's 9:48.
Looks like we're at new business, postponement of purchase of state-adopted instructional materials. I feel like you already teed this one up for us.
I did.
And they need a motion.
They need a motion.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to postpone the, well, do I need to read?
The science and health.
Let's look here.
I'll move to postpone the purchase of the science and health, the state-adopted instructional materials as needed.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, moved and seconded. It needs discussion.
Yeah. So Bruce, we're going to be postponing this just temporarily, is that right?
So it's a postponement of purchase for this year. That's correct.
Okay, and, I mean, I worry about, curriculum's been one of my areas of go-to, and it's the reason we're here, is to teach kids and to get that. So why are we postponing this?
It's a, when we start looking at the finances of purchasing two separate, two new curricula.
Because we waited so long, and it's all ganged up, and we just don't have the budget for it, is that kind of what?
So it was complex, Brad. During COVID, language arts was postponed.
Sure.
So that we ended up with language arts, mathematics, and science in three successive years on the state calendar, which is the three large, comprehensive curriculum. So we are not the only district right now who is seeking postponement as we can. And we certainly don't want to, like, we want to bring the science in when we can, right? But that's the third of the big ones. And so a postponement is, if there's, our districts, and there are many, who are going to cut a whole bunch of people, right, and run down some other aspect of the district versus delay that, then it allows districts that flexibility. Not an easy choice.
Not an easy choice.
Do we have a plan or calendar to get back on track, or no?
Well, a lot of that has to go back to Jane and I's presentations tonight, right? How do you plan when we're still, you know, we don't know what that situation will look like in February. I think we just have to keep our feet on the ground and reach for the stars.
Well, there you go. Any other discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded, and discussion has been had. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, here's 4-1. Next up, board policy. Are you going to go through these one by one?
If you'd like, we'll just click quickly, discuss them. These are first readings.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Just give us the highlights.
All right, the first one, Bruce, you want to take that?
Sure, sure. So this is the curriculum alignment and program review. This is the process that's used to adopt curricula and textbooks. There are very minor There are very minor changes. What it's ensuring is that any of the curricula that we adopt identifies individual or individuals and groups that include Native Americans, European, African, Asian, Pacific Islanders. So it's culturally representative of all the students that we serve, okay?
Next one, records of disabilities.
State Board of Education recently made changes to the rules regarding directory information and student permanent records. It reflects these changes. OSBA will be doing a more comprehensive review of policies related to student records and releasing additional updates in the future. There were not very many changes about what this looked like from past policy.
Good.
Graduation requirements. It added information about the extended diploma and making sure that we're notifying parents about the options that are available to kids.
What, did we take it out at some point?
No.
It's it's simply an addition of extended diploma to a whole policy.
Yeah.
One statement.
Yes, it's back in, so it was out and now it's back in.
That's weird. Okay.
But they took it out.
I don't know, I don't know.
It may have been an oversight.
Yeah. All right, amusations.
This is, the the biggest change here is the addition of concussion protocols for all students. So it requires if a student, they were riding their bike, they crashed their bike, they're not an athlete, they have a concussion, there's a process that we need to follow to make sure that we're providing accommodations while they recover from their concussion. So that'll include the school nurse, counselor, they get on a temporary 504 plan. It's a whole series of processes, but it it should not be too intensive. The majority of students that experience concussion are athletes, we're already getting that support. Very few elementary school students, and I think we've had this year, I think, 15 concussions across the district. So it's not a huge number, but there are processes to put in place, which this is.
Are we covered on Spikeball?
No, Spikeball is exempt.
All right. Directory information.
Very little change. The, it's, yeah, I don't think there was any major changes in the directory.
They're removing some, like, student email addresses.
They're removing information that was previously directory information. And it's all privacy-related.
Yep.
All right, that takes us through the policies. Now we have a budget committee, committee calendar. Do we need to approve this or are we just reviewing it?
First read.
Yes.
First read, first read? Okay. That looks good to me, three meetings. Any, okay, anything on that, anybody? All right, let's go to other business information only. Exemptions from competitive bidding. Is that just a read-only thing? Okay, then we'll do comments from the public. We got three here, all right, let me, two.
That's great.
Oh, right. And I don't, okay, let me read my thing here.
Yep, we got the infomercial.
Uh, yeah, okay. So a couple of reminders about public comment. The information you provide as well as your comments are managed to public record. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints criticizing specific student groups or individual district staff members. Complaints will be handled following these steps outlined in Board Policy KL and Administrative Regulation KLAR, copies of which are available on the table outside the conference rooms. Please treat the meeting with respect and follow our policies regarding all students' belongings and nondiscrimination, which protect our students, employees, visitors, with an environment free from discrimination, harassment, or bias incidents based on perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or national origin. Written public comments are read independently by the board prior to the meeting. The board may discuss a written public comment in the board meeting. Written public comments will be available in the updated board packet. To deny, we did receive one written public comment. If you're an iReady, write your comment this evening, you can submit it as a written public comment for the next board meeting or email the board. Information is available on a slide presentation at the conclusion of public comment or pick up a handout at the table. All right, here's the following process, 15 minutes for public comment total. Each commenter will have three minutes to provide public comment. Comments should be brief and concise. In-person public comments will be followed by virtual public comments, of which tonight there are none. Your comment should be directed to the board. The board may engage with the commenter by asking follow-up questions. The board chair will refer questions or request for action to superintendent for a response or follow-up at a later date. The audience should not engage with the commenter. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state the following. Your name, if you reside within the district or work for the district, affiliation with the district such as student, parent, staff member, community member, or community organization. Is that clear? Did I read that? Quickly now, if you can't listen fast enough, I apologize. All right, so our first person up is Liz Craig.
Hello, I'm Liz Craig. I am the, I am a staff member, I am also a resident here. I just wanted to give some kudos to the district. I am also the classified president, if you don't know that. I have been in more meetings this year already than my whole year and a half before that, which is telling me a few things. Our district is really focused on accountability, not only for themselves, but for us as well. And we have some long-term, really hard-working staff who really appreciate that extra effort, and I want to give kudos where I can, so way to go, you guys. I want to touch a little bit on the OSHA deal. I just want to clarify that our staff member did first go to their supervisor and report the safety hazards and did not feel comfortable with the outcome. So I really and truly want to just champion any employee who utilizes what OSHA has to offer when they feel like they're in an unsafe situation, so way to go. One of the awesome outcomes of that is that OSHA figured out that we were not really using our safety committee appropriately. And that leads to a lot of safety issues for our staff. So as an association, as a district, when we are partnering to keep people safe, we need to make sure that we're in compliance of those things. So as an outcome of that OSHA report, we now have a really amazing district leader, her name's Julie, who is leading that committee. And I've signed up to be the co-chair so that I can do my part to make sure we're all, we're all doing everything we can for safety. So again, I'm super thankful for that OSHA report. I want to give a shout out to Dave. I know Dave and I work a lot together because he's over a lot of my folks, so I don't have shout outs for a lot of other people. But Dave has done some really, really, really hard work, and we've had to sit across the table from each other and be very hard with each other for really great reasons. And I think it's important to know that he's doing great work in those meetings. And same thing with HR, there's a lot of great things happening when we are coming together, talking about the hard stuff, dealing with the hard stuff, and making sure that people are being safe and accountable. So I just want to give a shout out there. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Liz.
All right. Next up is Autumn Moles.
Hello, you might remember me, I'm Autumn, I work at the West Albany High School. I'm a lunch lady, I also live in Albany. I was here last board meeting, letting you know about the West Albany High School and all of our lunches that we've been serving. I am not here to discredit Genuine or any of our hard staff. They have been across all the schools busting their butts to the point of literally busting their butts. So to give you an update, because I came up here because I know what we're serving the children, and I know what the children are asking for, and it is more chicken nuggets, more french fries. I'm now making 22 pizzas, last time I was here I was only making 18. So our, we are now changing our food to accommodate the children. We are not, they are now asking for more chicken nuggets and french fries instead of taking the scratch food that is sitting there and we are throwing it away. That basil, basil cheese pasta, or the basil, excuse me, the basil grilled cheese, that basil cost $13 a pound, and we needed 500 pounds for our district. I, all I hear throughout this entire board and everything we're talking about is money, 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 money. And I know we don't have it, I know we're very limited on it. So why are we changing everything and making it so, which I don't want, I want the kids to get the best food. However, at what expense? Because they're not, we're, we've getting, we're getting 38% saying that they love it, or 30%, 48% saying it's, it's good, but that's not, we need to make sure they're eating because they're going to school not eating now because they don't want the grilled cheesy pasta. I am all for food, good food, scratch food, I am going away from because we've already had people calling about raw food issues, which we didn't even serve raw food yet because I'm at West Albany. We, they, it was a potato issue. So there's a lot of issues when we're doing this in a big school district, and we're the ones cooking it, like I've said before, because we are understaffed. We have had two people come in, and I will gratefully say that we have had two more people come into our kitchen. But now we have also been added Albany options. So on top of all of our chaos trying to train these new, new people, we're now being added on another 130 meals and saying, well, we needed to change some things, and that's just how you have to deal with it. This seems very unorganized as a person who is working for this district, and this, like, it seems like a mess. And we're trying to figure it out, and we're just being told, just figure it out, it'll be all right, we're gonna get, we're gonna get through it. But our kids are suffering because, and then our budget is suffering because we can't afford to pay to make all this scratch food and then to be throwing it away. That to me is unacceptable. And then also I have children coming up and asking for those second and third meals, which I know ODE does not allow, but I can't give them to them. And I'm literally throwing away food. And my, I have children asking me for second and third meals. So feeding the children at the end of the day is the main priority. What is, what is the solution to this? Because there has to be something. And paying more for a company to literally tell us lunch ladies how to do our job, that's not, that's not it. I can make a recipe and I can do the work.
Wow, you do not want to.
Loud.
Thank you.
I thought that was an alarm, for real.
I, you know, real quick. I don't understand, as a board member, how am I supposed to reconcile your concerns with the fact that everybody else is saying nothing but positive things about the lunch service? Like kids and other schools, like literally everybody but you are, are saying, so I don't understand how I'm supposed to reconcile that.
And I, that I seem, it seems to be going not correctly because that's not what I'm hearing. I'm literally having kids telling me that the food is all right, and it's, they want more chicken nuggets and cheeseburgers, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that the food isn't better, it's a better quality. But to say that we're serving scratch is not, is not 100% true. But you're trying to be cheaper in a district because we don't have the money, but then you're also trying to pull these things that are so wonderful. But you have, but yeah, we don't even have our children passing math, we have 10% at math. So food isn't really the biggest issue to me, and we're paying a company to come in and change everything within our food district, within our nutrition services, when that's not the, like, that hasn't been the, the problem of the situation.
So it's a real problem whether we're using a third-party vendor for managing our foods, is that your real issue?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
And that's where we've gone upon deaf ears because we've mentioned it multiple times, and it always just seems that we can't do that, we can't do that. Multiple, multiple school districts, Grants Pass, Lebanon, they've all done this. And I, and I apologize, I apologize, I won't come anymore and say that I, you know, that I don't like the food because this is just what I'm hearing as well, and they're not, and when we tell them that, they come up here and say it's so great. So that's where I, you know, it is a mixed review, and that is.
No, it's okay, you don't need to apologize, nor do you need to stop coming, I was just asking. I just wanted you to understand my perspective on.
And to say that Genuine Foods has been in our kitchens is not true at all as well. So like, we've had one person in our kitchen, and then it's just, there's a multiple of things that are not being discussed with us, and we're the ones doing the work. It's just being tossed about, exactly like becoming a base kitchen at West Albany. I don't know if you, like I said last time, because you weren't here. Our kitchen is small, so now we're taking on Albany options on top of already, we were already getting burnt to the ground. We got added more because we weren't listened to, no one listened to us, and they just said, well, we need to do this. So now we have more, and we also have more stuff in our kitchens, and more, and now I have two more people. So where, what, and you said there is no safety issue, but if you come into my kitchen and you try and get around afraid, and I have boxes, it's so, it's like, that's the frustrating part, is none of you have been in this kitchen.
Sorry, that's where I got it, at the time, so I didn't mean to call you. And I did watch your vote of comments, I wasn't sitting here, but I did see it, so.
Yes.
From last night, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that's it, the other public comment was about our 15-minute lunches again, but I don't know that, we need to discuss it.
Just a quick follow-up.
Yeah, the written one.
We did get that earlier this morning.
Yeah.
Bruce went to North Albany.
Yeah.
And timed it.
Okay.
And we don't, we don't see a problem with that. We'll follow up in more detail at the next meeting.
It's one of those weird things that won't go away. But I promise you, you don't want to make kids sit in a cafeteria for 30 minutes every day. I promise you do not want to do that. Okay, any, I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank.